Good evening. This meeting of the Winter Town Council for April 7, 2015 is now called audit. This meeting is being recorded and may be televised live. Would you all please rise? Councilor Mott, we just pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCann, if you would, please.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim McCann, town manager, and I would like to introduce our newly appointed librarian, Diane Wallace. Diane, this is our town council. Diane Wallace is a Quincy resident and is coming to us from the Sogas Public Library, where she served as the director there for four years. Diane has worked in some capacities in the library field for over thirty years and as a director for the past ten. Diane started her library career as an assistant librarian at the Brockton Hospital Medical Library. While there, Diane also served as a public library representative for the state advisory council of libraries. Diane worked for the FCAT Library at this Fidelity Investments, and in 2004 Diane became the director of the Bacon Free Library in Natick and stayed in that position until 2011, when she transferred to the Sogas Public Library as their director. Diane comes from a very impressive background and was highly recommended as not only a librarian but also as a community leader. Our library board of trustees is thrilled to have you come on board. I know the staff is thrilled, and I'm thrilled. So, thank you for joining us. I'd like to introduce the council to you.
Welcome, Diane.
Thank you. I'll get Diane, I'll be here next week.
Okay. Sounds great.
Thank you.
Moving onward with the roll call, please.
Councilor Callen, Councilor Sanford, Councilor Boncorry.
Here.
Councilor Broom.
Present.
Councilor Terry.
Here.
Councilor Bayagian.
Here.
Councilor Demento.
Yep.
Vice President Neal.
President Gill.
President. Moving on to minutes from March 17, 2015 circulated. Would I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor Bayagian. Come on. Second. Thank you. Councilor Bayagian.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilor?
Can we have myself abstain? I was not present at that meeting.
Yes. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Councilor Demento has abstained. The meeting begins from March 24 as circulated. Motion.
Motion.
By Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor Broom.
No, Councilor President, that was the spring forum. Somebody not voted on that.
Seconded by Councilor Bayagian. Councilor Sanford, Boncorry, and Broom were not in attendance. All those who were in attendance say aye, and in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous with Councilor Sanford, Boncorry, and Broom abstaining. Thank you. President Powers and Sullivan for our external audit report. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm Jim Powers from Powers and Sullivan. I'm here to answer your questions tonight. We'll go over the results of the fiscal year '14 audit. And sitting next to me is?
I'm Dick Hinkston, I'm the internal auditor for the town.
Okay. From an overview standpoint, I'd just like to thank Jim and everybody, the staff, school, et cetera. Everybody was extremely cooperative in the process of the audit, whatever we asked for. We received a pretty timely manner, and I thought the audit went very well. What you'll find is, if you took a look at prior year's management letters to the management letter this year, it has gotten considerably thinner, which is a good thing. Management really takes proactive steps in order to eliminate any of the comments that we've had relative to improving internal controls and making it a little bit more efficient. What you'll find is there's no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and what we consider as the points remaining, just some other matters. And even the several points remaining that we'll go over, substantially all of them have either been completed probably in fiscal year '15, and Dick could probably be able to give you a better update than I at this point in time, or have been processed to be done either probably end of fiscal year '15 or fiscal year '16. So, excellent results for the audit. Three reports that are part of the audit. First one is the Schedule of Federal Awards. There's a compliance requirement that it dispenses about $500,000 a year in federal funds that the independent auditor has to do as part of a single audit, and do compliance testing and report back to the federal government to make sure that you're spending their money in accordance with their procedures and compliance requirements. In fiscal year 2014, you spent about $1,006,000. In that, most of these are school-related, and what you'll find with the report is that we have unmodified reports. We didn't have any findings relative to either the financial accounting for that or the compliance requirement. So, it's kind of the best report that you can get relative to that. We don't test every grant. We test different ones each year, but we test a good amount as part of that. So, that's a nice, simple report. If anybody had a question on that, they'd certainly be able to address it. We'd be able to too, also. Okay. The next report that I'd like to go over, and again, it's kind of briefly. There's a report on examination of basic financial statements. It's a thick report, and I probably will like to guess you wouldn't like me to go through page by page.
I can, if you want. I am an accountant. I love this stuff.
I love it.
Dick and I will just have laughs on that. But, the important thing, you want to take a look at your financial statements. These financial statements are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles in the United States. You have different rules in Massachusetts on how you, in effect, get to free cash, how you budget, how you have your fund structure, and the rules you got in there. And then what happens is it's a series of additional adjustments that are made so your financial statement's comparable not only to every community in Massachusetts, but to every community throughout the nation. And that will allow rating agencies or people that might be investing in your bonds, et cetera, to evaluate your financial position and condition and determine what your interest rates would be, whether they want to invest in you, and how healthy your financial condition is. The best thing that you can have is an unmodified audit opinion, and basically that's the only thing that we own in here, and you do have an unmodified audit opinion. It used to be called unqualified. Now they changed the words for unmodified. And what that means is we agree and we believe that these financial statements are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and all the required disclosures and compliance with GAAP. One of the things that is happening, though, is GAAP is constantly changing. So, the standard setting brought up that the Government Accounting Standards Board is constantly issuing new standards, and there's a couple that are coming up in the next year or two. This year was an easy year for GAAP standards, but I think you're prepared to implement those in the subsequent year, in 2015. But as long as you maintain that those standards, that's important. Again, unmodified. The important things that we look at from, say, analytical, is how healthy is your general fund? Realistically, the best way to look at that is the budgetary basis of accounting, and that's presented in here. And what you'll find is that you have a pretty good budgetary results. You use free cash each year to balance your budget, but you're replenishing that with revenue surpluses or turnbacks in expenditures, so you're managing the fund's wealth. You have enough fund balance in there. It's healthy. You have about $1,000,000 worth of stabilization funds, I believe, as of June 30, 2014. Not sure what happened to them this year. So, you have some reserves set aside to maintain that financial flexibility. You're not a huge place, so you don't need $10, $15 million worth of reserves. It would be great if you had them, but, you know, from a practical standpoint, I think you have sufficient reserves in order to maintain that. But you want to maintain, from a policy standpoint, if you can keep about 10% of your fund balance every year from operating, recurring operating expenses, that's a really good position because you can deal from a position of strength. A lot of communities might have a little bit more, a lot could have a lot less. And my guess is you probably had as bad a winter as everybody else did. Okay? And so, there may be some funds coming back in, depending on how the state works with the feds and what they can get approved, which will certainly relieve the burden. But having a little bit more set aside will certainly help you, not having to cut back, et cetera. It might tap into your fund balance, which people expect when you have a winter like this. But as long as you have a policy and a plan to replenish those particular reserves, I think you'd be in good shape. Biggest thing from the other thing in here, it's your unfunded liabilities from the GAAP standpoint. So, your pension liabilities. Actually, you're about 70% funded as of, like, 123113, I believe it was, which is a lot better than a lot of retirement systems out there. There are a lot that are under 50% funding, funded. So, you weathered the storm several years ago and have replenished that to a pretty good level, so I think you're higher than most. That liability that you have on there, that's one of the GAAP changes that'll happen in fiscal year 2015. This is just a paper entry, but for your full accrual statements that are part of that, you're going to be moving that liability that now is just a disclosure onto your full accrual basis financial statements. Doesn't mean you have to change how you budget. You're going to still follow Mass General Law. You're going to follow and make sure that you fund your pension according to the law and the contribution will be set by the actuary and the retirement system. Make that funding schedule, and you're on track to fund the unfunded liability. Change will be, it's just moving that into now, yeah, on a full accrual basis financial statement. And like I said, it's, you're only putting in 30%, depending on what the next valuation would be. It might be lower. Market's certainly a lot better than the last time the valuation was done, but sometimes your expenses go up also. But that liability's going to be moving over to the statement in that position. We will go over that next year to see what it actually looks like. I think the amount that you'll have coming on, your books will be less than a lot of our other similar-sized clients, and they're all in the same position. And the other one is the other post-employment benefits, which is retirees' in effect health insurance. You set up another post-employment benefit trust fund, so you have the ability to, if you want to appropriate and set funds aside and restrict those funds in a permanent nature. However, that obviously, if you do that, that affects your current year budget, and so it's just finding that balance and a plan to start addressing that. You don't have to, because it's not law. Pension is law. You have to fund that in a certain time period. Other post-employment benefits, it's more sound business practices to address that liability. The only thing that, what you'll find is that a lot of places are starting to do that on an ongoing basis, maybe putting a little bit of an appropriation in every year, ratcheting it up as time goes on, because the rating agencies do look at that number and ask, and you can talk to Jim and everybody else, that what are you doing about your unfunded liability relative to OPEB? That $62 million liability will come on your books in probably three years. Gatsby's amazing in each one of these long-term benefits that, liabilities that you have in there. Biggest thing you just have to worry about, and I would just say that you'd want to have a plan to maybe fund that and look at that on a long-term perspective. This is a long-term liability. Nobody expects you to come up with $62 million in the next couple of years to all of a sudden put aside. But they may want to see, and the rating agencies may want to see you with a plan. And then as long as you have a plan and you have policies in place, and if you stick with that, you'll look upon favorable. What you don't want to be is you won't want to be the last community in Massachusetts to do this. And probably it's about 10% right now, I'd say, that funding those liabilities with significant funds as opposed to just throwing some, you know, $50,000 over there. That really doesn't make a difference from a liability standpoint, but at least they're getting used to the fact that they're recognizing that liability's there. So, any questions on the overview of the financial statements?
Questions, maybe? House Speaker. Yeah. So, just to go back on a couple of things that you talked about, we're about, what, $42, $43 million budget, so you would say?
Yeah.
So, you'd say about 10% overall savings?
Yeah.
$4 million, 4.2 million?
With the stabilization funds and?
Including stabilization funds, free cash, just if you needed free money.
That's something that is considered, I believe, healthy, but most of the metrics I see out there. Other communities have higher amounts, but ones that have lower, they have a struggle when something like the snow happens this year to not having to cut basic services in order to balance their budget. You might have to dip into that, but hopefully you'll get a, you know?
So, in light of that, we have a substantial shortfall in our budget for snow removal.
Yes.
Would you suggest, overall, it would be a better policy to eat that in one bite? Or depending upon the amount? I mean, would it be some guidelines in actual figures? We have about a half a million dollars. We have about $3 million overall, I think, in the bank, give or take. We have a half a million dollars in this liability.
Yeah.
What would be a professional?
One of the things that I'd take a look at is fiscal year, you know, '15's budget to see what you had in there, how much of free cash do you use, and project out what you think you have through the end of the year. What you don't want to do is, you're going to have to eat this at one point in time. Is that projection the deficit after?
After budgetary things, we're looking at about a half a mil, give or take.
Right.
No?
Not at the potential reimbursement.
Well, we're not, but reimbursement isn't here.
Reimbursement isn't here, so?
So, I'm talking about real money right now, not a wing and a prayer.
Right.
It comes, it comes. It's a different situation, but if it doesn't come?
I would suggest that some sort of blended solution might be the best way to take a look at it. If you've got a half a million dollars, and again, it's more just doing the financial projections going out. I haven't done that to see whether or not you have the room to do that. You don't want to be cash strapped for that. I know the DOL is thinking about allowing you a two-year reimbursement rate that you can take half of it this year, half of it the next year. But that kind of gives you a false sense of security with what free cash would be certified at, because if the DOL gives you, say, I have $250 this year, I'm going to let you raise the extra $250 in fiscal year '16, '17, I mean, you know, you do a '16 and '17. You know, who knows how your winter is next year when you get down to it? And if you inflate your free cash, what I would tell you to do, if your free cash is inflated by being allowed to postpone raising that, I would say do not use that free cash for anything else.
Mr. Hinkston?
Can I just toss something in, Jim? Yeah. One of the things that the DOL allows you to do is, once you know what your FEMA reimbursement is or an estimated amount, so if they're going to give you 30% or 40%, you can move that expenditure out of the general fund and set up a deficit into a special revenue fund, waiting for the FEMA money to come in. So that, and they won't hit your free cash for that. So, that's one way to manage it. I don't think it's a good idea to push it out for two years. That's another thing that they're trying to let you do, raise it on, and usually a deficit has to be raised on the recap sheet for the following year. Like Jim said, they're going to let you do it over two years, but, and not hit your free cash for it. But the bond rating agencies still look at it, and so a deficit is a deficit. And so, you may have free cash, but it's going to get you one way or the other next. And I think you're still all about maintaining your bond rating, and I think that's, you know, a really important thing for you right now.
Any further questions from the council? I have another question, but on a different subject, so if somebody else wanted to comment on that. Anybody else have else to go?
With respect to unfunded liabilities, you said we're about 70%. What are, what's, how many communities percentage-wise would you say are in a stronger position?
I'd just say, from a 70% funding situation for your pension, it's probably, I don't know, I'm thinking probably 20%, 25%. If you go to regional retirement systems, I think Middlesex is about 50% funded, and they'll, they cover a lot of communities. I think there's, you know, 50, 60 communities that are under a regional retirement system. So, you're a lot better than a lot of other places, but I've seen a lot of 60s and 50s. Some have gone into the 40s.
How many 80s?
I don't do everybody, but I think there's, you know, probably, maybe 5%, 10% in the 80s.
Thank you.
And even a Wellesley that used to be 100, they're in their 70s right now because of, you know, 2009 when the market crashed, and they're just recovering to that point in time, and they, you know.
Paul, one of the things that you guys do that is better than most of the places is you have, I think, till 2040 to be fully funded, but yours is, funding schedule is a lot shorter. I think it's 2034 or something.
2027.
2027.
Yeah.
So, it's going to make you funded a lot quicker than most places.
Yeah. And that gives you some flexibility in case you do have, say, a bad year or two. You can make a decision to go from 2027 to 2030. Again, that's one of those things I wouldn't recommend unless, you know, you really, really had to do it. Rating agencies will look at that favorably, that you're 2027. That used to be the old date, 2028. And then legislative extended that, because a lot of places were not going to make the 2028, and they extended it up another 12 years to 2040.
Councilor Boncorry.
Yeah. My questions are on the same line. Our pension program back in 2011, we were at 73.3%. Now we're at 69.9%. Is that some kind of trend that we're going backwards on building this up, number one? And number two, are other post-employment pension problems, we're, you know, $62 million at some time, and we're funded at zero right now? How much should we be putting away to catch that up? And, you know?
See, that's a, that's a, that's a discussion you really need with your actuaries, because you've got to build that in, because if you set money aside on a constant basis, that, you know, you've got an annual required contribution that goes in, from a funding percentage of where you are, what's in your liability, your liability could go down by at least a third. That $62 million to become $40 million if you fully funded your annually required contribution based on the actuarial evaluation. So, what you pay on a pay-as-you-go basis for your retirees' health benefits accredited to your annual required contribution, plus any additional funds that you set aside in that irrevocable trust. You now have a vehicle that's going to earn investment income when you don't right now, so that extra one-third is going to be made up not by employer contributions but by investment earnings. And so, the discount rate goes from 4% to maybe 7.5%, and that makes a huge difference in that particular liability. And what you want to do is have the actuary show you all of the different scenarios. What if we did this? What if we made a contribution of $500,000 a year? What would that do? Or $200,000 a year? And they would be able to track that out and give you different scenarios of what would happen to the liability from a long term, and then all of a sudden, you'll build up that funding ratio, but your liability will go down significantly if you can fund that out.
Councilor Neal. So?
Can I, were you looking for a number?
I was looking for a number, and I also was looking for why we've gone from 11 to now.
Well, pension was, it was because of the market.
Right.
The market decreased. It wasn't because the benefits went up or anything. You guys are, they're paying, and the new people are paying 9% plus 2, so they're funding pretty well. But it's the market. You know, that's what happened for that. The OPEB, it's a tough one, but like Jim said, it's like, if you look at, in the financial statements, there's a calculation that says the net operating, the new, the net operating obligation, and it tells you what you would have to pay in to fund currently and to fund on an annual basis for taking care of the unfunded liability over a 30-year period. It's probably a million-dollar number, at least, you know, safe to say.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's a big number that would just have to drop in on top of your other health insurance classes to get there.
Councilor Neal. So, you unfortunately threw out the one number we're putting into that as $50,000. I don't know if you did that out of, you know, because you knew, or you thought that was some benchmark for foolishness, or?
Well, what it is, is a start, but it's really not going to significantly affect, if you need to put, like Dick said, a million dollars in, you're putting $50,000 in. It's a start, but it's not really going to change the $62 million by that much from the actuarial standpoint, because you're not putting in enough significant assets that will earn that 7.5% interest rate, you know, investment earnings over time. So, your investment earnings is going to be a lot lower, which won't offset the required from the employer contribution. And again, that's the?
Just one more thing on this. So, they've made two GAAP changes that reflect items that are going to be coming on ostensibly to the balance sheet.
Right.
Are there any other additional unfunded issues or liabilities that you can see them moving to, to get more in line with GAAP principles?
These are, these are the last two really major things that, unless Dick, you can think of anything. Those are the only two on the horizon, and I see all of them.
I can't see, I don't know of any other ones that are of any magnitude like that that are already recorded.
This?
So, when we talk about this unfunded liability there of the $62 million, what percentage of towns are actually making a realistic attempt to pay that? You know, that million dollars a year or things like that that you're saying? Are there a large percentage of towns that would do that?
There's a handful, there's probably 10 or so that I know of personally, that are funding the act, that are truly making the contribution they need to make based on the actuarial evaluation and sending that money into that trust. And their liability was reduced significantly for that. There's also many other ones. There's probably another 25% of the clients that I see are making more than just the nominal contribution and sit back and say, all right, we're going to use, we're going to try to ratchet this up to 100%, but we can't start at 100%. Why don't we start at 25%? Sure. And then throw another $50,000, $100,000, depending the size of the community, obviously, it makes a difference, but from a percentage standpoint, and then bring that up over like a 10-year period to get to the point. And so, what happens there is that instead of using a 3.5% or a 4% discount rate, if you're funding zero, you can use a 7.5% to 8%, 8%, probably 7.5%. It's what everybody's kind of used from a long-term rate. You'll have a blended rate that would go to maybe 5%, 5.4, 5.5, and as time goes on, you'll bring that up. So, over time, you'll, and again, the rating agencies do like to see that plan, and they do like to see more than just, to get credit for that, there's a lot of other things that you do that they give you a lot of credit for. You know, starting the pension side, because they look at both of it. If you are 70%, 75% funded, that's a lot, it's still the same really population almost that getting both of these benefits. You can almost group them both together, except for the teachers are also on the other one, on the health insurance plan. So, if you really look at one, so, but you put them both together, and that's really your long-term liability. And so, someplace that might be funding a lot more in OPEB might be part of a county retirement system that's funded at 47%. And so, that washed the other one.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, Mr. Hinkston. I think the report that you have given us has summed up some significant improvements in our community and the finances, and I would like to commend our staff for making those improvements, and you guys for encouraging us and directing us.
Thank you.
And my, you know, when I got this deal last week, when they could email it to us, the first thing I grabbed was the management letter, because that's, the rest is all good stuff and hard work, but that's kind of where we, I don't know what's going on, and I was kind of looking for more pages. But it's good, which is a good thing that we don't have, but I was thrilled to see, especially the school, the federal grants, we came out very, very good on, which is a huge credit to being set up properly and getting things, getting things wrong. But I was absolutely thrilled with the management letter on how things are going.
So, so much.
Any further comments from the council? Thank you again, gentlemen. And to our staff, thank you. Moving onward, it's after a very cold, damp winter, and there's lots of dirt and trash around. We have a dedicated beautification committee here tonight to announce a kickoff of some significant cleanup events this month and kicking off, although actually, Alan, we kicked off a couple of weeks back. Alan Pividi and his wife Betty, and former councilor, Richard, my brother, Richard Gill, are here to give us a little update. Alan, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, President Gill, for having us tonight. A little history of the Winter Beautification Committee is committed to creating awareness to improve the appearance of public spaces in town. Spirituality volunteers come together regularly to work on projects throughout the community. As Council President Gill just said, our most recent project was held on March 28. The Beautification Committee, along with some citizen volunteers, spent an hour and a half picking up debris along Veterans Road. I sent? I sent some photos to Councilor Mayo, and I think he's gonna utilize his new screen over there to show us, nope, that's further on in the presentation.
Timing's not good.
Go back to the... No.
Listen, right there. Miller Field?
First one, probably, back, the very first one I sent you along. No, not today.
That was, sorry.
Okay.
There you go.
There it is. Okay, that was from an hour and a half of work, four of them, four people, a little disappointed that only four people showed up, it was in the Town Manager's blood for volunteers. That was for a half-mile stretch of Veterans Road, right there. And it was cold and snowy. It was cold, okay. If you wanna move to the picture from today, Greg, I went by, I was driving by there today, I couldn't drive by. So this was just from, that was from Bolsters to the Temple. Three bags, lots of trash. Okay.
Miller Field?
Miller Field. So in looking from Veterans Road over to Miller Field, it was embarrassing to look at it underneath the stands over there. This wasn't from the winter. This is stuff that's been there all season. From the, whenever the athletics teams use this field, it's full of trash. I guess I would encourage maybe the athletic director to utilize his teams, coaches and teams to give back to the community, pick up the fields that they use, give back to the community that supports them. There's another one with, you know, I wanna thank Jerry Cooper for stopping by after our cleanup on the twenty-eighth. There's a photo of Jerry and myself, and we were able to throw the trash right into the trash truck right there, so it didn't sit on the side of the road for the weekend. There's Jerry and myself. So I would also like to announce that there's a group in town that is in the process of organizing a townwide cleanup on April twenty-fifth, with a rain date of April twenty-sixth. There'll be more details to follow. I've been in discussions with Leslie Cefory, who has done some major cleanups in town, I guess, townwide. But this cleanup will involve parks and areas around the schools and beaches, maybe get some fields done. But I would also like the Chamber of Commerce to encourage their network of business owners to join the cleanup, clean up around their businesses, their certain business districts on this day, and not just this one day. Do, you know, go out and clean up in front of your business. I've seen business owners walk around, walk over trash to go into their business, bend over, pick it up, sweep it up. If the guy next door doesn't do it, sweep it up a couple times, maybe he'll finally see that he'll pick it up. So, you know, I just don't, a clean town is not just one day. We're also looking for volunteers. We have a small group, we're an aging group, but we're an enthusiastic group. So if anybody would like to join our committee, contact me, my name's in the book, I'm at the landline, they can contact the Town Manager's office, they have my email, and that's about it. We do just little projects all around town. And Peter knows, he's helped us a lot. I think that pile of trash that showed on the Saturday before last, if we looked at it in a different light, it was Alan's pickup truck mounded with trash from that one collection.
A half-mile stretch of Veterans Road.
And then unloaded there. I wanna commend you guys for your enthusiasm and for sticking to this over the years, and Betty for, as she walks, cannot walk by a piece of trash, she walks along, she has...
It looks so much better without the trash.
It certainly does. And I would encourage all of us as citizens to take this day and these days around it, and then set the pace. But that particular day, let's all make sure the front of our own houses looks good. We sweep up around there. As Alan said, it's contagious if you sweep up, so does the guy next door, and if you don't, neither does he. So again, Alan, thank you to you and your committee. I also have a presentation for you, Peter. Uh-oh. Here you go. You didn't have any gloves when you were there, I hope there's no ethics violations here by giving you a pair of gloves. Are these fifty dollars on the...
No, no. Check inside.
There's no... I do have to say, when I got home that Saturday, I had to keep... Right, right, I was worried about you, so there you are, you have a nice, brand-new pair of gloves. Thank you very much. Thanks again, Alan, Betty. And anybody else that wants to join us anytime, I can, we can always get eight more pairs.
When did you guys clean up then?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth? Saturday, yeah.
What time?
Leslie Cefory, I mean, she's, is a girl there that's really, you know, is different than we are, with her going around, they don't know how to organize it, they were just... Maybe the Winthrop Cancer Group, like, three years ago?
They did the annual cleanup and everything?
Yeah. Richard's gonna do the, the, the Giral Beach on May fifth. Yes, also on the twenty-fifth is the John Kilbar pickup, on his path at the end of Short Beach at the same day, so. Hope to see a lot of people there. Thank you.
Or else.
Okay. Thank you. Take it. We have three public hearings that we're gonna move on to. The first one should be relatively quick, so I'm gonna move to that one first, and it's that notice is hereby given that the Massachusetts General Laws of Town and Winthrop conduct a public hearing on or after seven P.M. to discuss the closing of Main Street between Cross Street and Haynes Street from May first to December thirty-first. Is there anybody that would like to speak on the closing of Main Street from Payson to Cross Street for the period of May first, two thousand and fifteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen? The purpose of that is for the construction of the high school. They'll be blocking Main Street, blocking that portion of Main Street off that was in front of the old high school for that period of time. Does anyone wish to speak either in favor, does anyone wish to speak in favor of that proposal?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just beyond the record, Public Safety has met with the construction company, as well as the subcommittees for the school building committee, and we feel it's necessary to expedite the building and not to run behind delays and cost the citizens of Winthrop more money by these delays that it's necessary to close that street at this time for that particular time period.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else care to speak on that closing of Main Street? If not, that hearing is closed, and we'll move on to a continuation of the hearing on the sixty Main Street S D O D. That hearing, just to give you...
Herman Street.
Herman Street, sorry. Give you a little history on what's happened on the sixty Herman Street S D O D. In October of two thousand and fourteen, the town clerk received a petition from the applicant to be referred by the town council to the planning board, which it was on October eighth. On December eighth, the planning board held its public hearing, and on December sixteenth, I'm sorry, on December eighth, the planning board held its hearing, on December sixteenth, they referred to the town council, but their planning board hearing materials back, and referred the petition to the Rules and Ordinance Committee for review of possible action on the situation. Rules and ordinance as well as public safety. On the fourth of January, the town council did not take any action at that point, but then the town council on the sixth of January held a public hearing, which was continued to the twentieth of January. Rules and ordinance has scheduled their meeting, hearing was held and continued after, the hearing was held by rules and ordinances and continued till after the meeting, the town council hearing, till after the meeting with the developer. A second neighborhood, a neighborhood meeting with the developer. The neighborhood meeting took place, a second neighborhood meeting took place on March twelfth, followed by a joint meeting of public rules of safe, public safety and the Rules and Ordinance Committee. And then on tonight, we have the final public hearing and a council vote. So at this point, to open up the hearing, the hearing tonight is on what the council, whether or not the council will vote an S D O D, Special Development Overlay District for the area. As you know, the next process is the council does not determine the design of the project or the limits of the project, the council only determines whether or not the parcel becomes designated as an S D O D, Special Development Overlay District. And if the council does do that, then it goes back to planning board, and planning board approves all of the, and recommends and approves all of the conditions of the permit. Opening the public hearing, reopening the public hearing. Does anybody wish to be heard at the public hearing? Yes, ma'am. Could you identify yourself?
Captain Hanson, Flatiron Hill, Hurley Street. Are you saying that they get permission to do it, and you can't tell us what they're actually gonna do?
Correct. Our function is to designate the property to, to designate that the property can be a Special Development Overlay District. Then it's up to the planning board to review their plans and grant them what they can, what can be done there. That's a planning board power by statute, not a council power by statute.
But once it goes to the planning board, the neighborhood has no say in it?
Oh, no, you definitely do. The neighborhood has input to the planning board as to what's, what can be done there.
So we'll know actually what they plan to do?
Oh, for sure, yeah. And you will have input to the planning board as to what you think should or should not be done.
Okay.
Any other questions on the public? I just will read a letter from Attorney Lynn, who represents the developer. I thought he was gonna be here, but apparently he's tired.
He said seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, seven fifteen. All right, we will, he said he's gonna be here at seven forty-five, and this may be...
Yeah, we're in the...
Okay, while we're... This president? Yeah, what I'll do is, let me suspend this, we'll go to the other public hearing, and it should probably take us three or four minutes, then when Mr. Lynn comes back. The other public hearing is to, notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventeen, the Code of the Town of Winthrop, that the Winthrop Town Council will conduct a hearing tonight on or after seven P.M. in the Hobby Hearing Room to transfer thirty thousand dollars from the sale of lots and graves to fund road repair at the Belle Isle Cemetery. All documents pertaining to this hearing shall be viewed in the town clerk's office during normal business hours. If I can go back procedurally, we have taken the Herman Street hearing and continued it, and now I am opening the hearing on the cemetery, then we'll go back to the other. So procedurally, we are opening the hearing to transfer thirty thousand dollars from the cemetery sale of lots to re-care the road at the, at the cemetery. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of that? Steve?
Absolutely. This is a section of the Belle Isle Cemetery from the parking lots up to the rotary that took quite a beating during the, during the winter months. Curbing was knocked out, the roadway is unraveling, so we wanna resurface that roadway from the, from the parking lots up around rotary and add, add new curbing to the rotary as well.
Okay, and to explain the reason of the transfer, these, correct me if I'm wrong, these are funds that must be used in the cemetery, there are specifically cemetery funds, they can't be used elsewhere.
Specifically to the enhancement or repair of the cemetery.
Does anybody else have a question or a comment?
Mr. President?
Yeah. Counselor DeBent?
It was referred to the Finance Committee, and we did come out with a positive recommendation to make the transfer from the sale of graves to the cemetery fund for the, for the repairs.
Any further comment? Not, we'll close the public hearing on the cemetery and move back, reopen the continued hearing on the sixty Herman Street. While we're waiting for Mr. Lynn's, I will read his letter, so save some time here. This was hand-delivered to me today. Dear Council President, as you know, the office represents Ocean City Development, L.L.C. My understanding, the town council may act upon the L.L.C.'s petition tonight to place sixty Herman Street into the Special Development Overlay District as provided under the Winthrop zoning bylaw. When we last appeared before the council, we agreed to continue the matter pending before the council in order to permit further dialogue and discussion with the abutting property owners and neighborhood residents. On March twelfth, Council of Huron hosted a neighborhood meeting, excuse me, where a number of residents attended. The developer made a further detailed presentation to the neighbors as to the plans for the property, as was requested by Council of Huron. Specifically, the developer identified a number of uses that would be permitted as a matter of right, including a place of worship with six to eight parking spaces, a performing arts center under the unexpired pre-existing use with no parking, or a two-family dwelling with four parking spaces, which would likely be a rental property. It was evident from those suggestions that none of these options were desirable, which strongly suggested an S D O D designation was appropriate and necessary to achieve a proposal that worked for both the developer, excuse me, and the neighborhood. As explained in the meeting in March, the goal is to find a project that could be, meet the expected parking requirements under the S D O D, which is mainly driven by the total bedroom count. Accordingly, the developer put forth several options that were most economically feasible and unlikely, and likely to meet the needs of the neighborhood, including proposals for four units, that is, four two-bedroom units with nine parking spaces, five units, three single bedrooms, two two-bedrooms with nine parking spaces, and six units, all single bedrooms with ten parking spaces. Based upon the size of the above units, these three proposals represent the optimal unit size for targeting a condominium market, something that was important to the overwhelming majority of neighbors present, i.e. that these condominiums, these condominiums versus rentals. As part of the presentation, the developer did consider a three-unit project. However, as a three-unit project under the S D O D, we have a number of unfavorable characteristics. It was not considered a viable option. First, based upon the available square footage, the units would be considerably larger and contain four bedrooms at a minimum. Second, with the parking requirements, a little typo there, Richard, sorry, under the S D O D capping, out of two spaces for two bedrooms or more, a three-unit parcel require only six parking spaces regardless of the number of bedrooms created. Lastly, with the existence of a very limited market for such condominiums, it would be a high risk that a model would slide toward a rental project or a roommate arrangement as opposed by the home, as opposed to a home ownership project. Each of those factors were not acceptable by most of the neighbors present. Accordingly, that idea was not considered feasible. Based upon the feedback of the neighbors as to what was acceptable and unacceptable, the developers are committed to a project that meets the following criteria. A, maximizes the parking space to the bedroom ratio. B, minimizes the unit size that is best suited for condominium arrangement. And C, ensures that the impact of the neighborhood remains minimal. With these objectives in mind, the developer is willing to commit to the town council and to the planning board that if, if an S D O D is approved, they will not seek a special permit to request more than five units with a mix of two-bedroom and three-bedroom, and three one-bedroom units, or more than four units with a maximum of two bedrooms per unit. Based on the foregoing and all of the information that is made out of the record to date, it is respectfully requested that the council adopt the petition of Ocean City Development, L.L.C., to develop the property at sixty Herman Street as a Special Development Overlay District. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Very truly, your, Richard Lynn. I went ahead and read your letter, because we started a little bit earlier.
Thank you.
Introduce Jenny Lynn, representing Ocean City Development, L.L.C.
Thank you, Mr. President, through the members of the council. I apologize for my tardiness, and I thank you for accommodating me at this later time. As the letter indicates, since we were last before the council with respect to this petition, we have had the opportunity to meet not only with the Rules and Order Subcommittee, but also with the neighbors, as the letter outlines and defines. I think the issue that is before the council this evening is whether or not this site is, it's been the same issue, whether or not this site is appropriate for S D O D designation, and based upon some of the concerns that were raised by various councilors as to what this plan might look like. Again, as I've said previously, although there is no obligation for us to demonstrate at this point in time how many units we intend to construct at the site, or to... at this point in time how many units we intend to construct at the site, or to, how we intend to arrange the units at the site, we felt it was feasible based upon Council of Verone's recommendation to try to figure out what would best fit here based upon concerns of neighbors and the needs of the neighborhood. I think a few things were evident, as indicated in my letter. A rental project at this site is not something that is feasible. The current use, or the most immediately passed, immediate past use of this, this site for a performing arts center is likewise not feasible and not something that the neighborhood wants. In a place of worship or a church arrangement, all three of which would be uses that would be permitted as a matter of right, were all immediately determined to be not feasible for this location. Accordingly, the only way that development could happen here for something that was more feasible than what the neighborhood wanted with respect to what could be done as of right, would to be designate this under the S D O D. That leaves the question, what would that look like? And I think we did a pretty good job and made a compelling argument as to why four or five units at this site works best. And the reason being is, at that number of units and with the number of bedroom count being what it was, we were prepared to make a commitment to do up to, up to five condominiums with an arrangement of a mix of two and one-bedroom units, or four condominiums with two bedrooms, all of which will drive and dictate the number of parking spaces that would be required. I think I've indicated in the letter, and certainly we made this very clear at the meeting with the neighborhood, that if this were a three-unit under the S D O D, it could have as many as twelve bedrooms. If these were not condos and were a rental arrangement, twelve bedrooms could conceivably be much more by way of cars for parking. We wouldn't be required to have the number of parking spaces on-site since we'd only have to be, we'd only be required to have seven parking spaces total. But you could conceivably have an arrangement if you had twelve people living in a roommate situation in the building that certainly was met with resistance and an option that clearly would not work. It doesn't work for the developer either, and the reason it doesn't work for the developer is they're not in the business of creating rental property, they're in the business of developing condominiums. And the market, I'm sure anybody who's in the business would tell you, that the market with that size condominium certainly doesn't appeal to a larger or a broader audience when it comes to trying to sell condo units. You know, the sweet spot, so to speak, is somewhere closer to the thousand, nine-hundred to twelve-hundred square feet as opposed to the higher, higher-sized units. And that's why we set on four to five units as being the optimal amount of units for this development. With that said, I think it needs to be made very clear that the council has two options: to vote to grant the S D O D and allow the Planning Board to then take on the responsibility of determining what this development will look like, or not vote the S D O D and determine what, you know, let the developer determine what can happen here by right. We don't want to do anything here that's the not, what the neighborhood doesn't want, including, we don't want to make it a place of worship, we're not interested in a performing arts center, and we're not interested in a very large two-family at this site. With that said, they do own the property, and something has to happen here, and something has to happen with respect to whether it's capable of returning anything on its, on their investment, or the property then gets sold to, to another party, and who knows what's going to happen. So I think there's an important crossroads here for the council, and I think it's important to realize that, you know, we've done what we think is a good job at trying to listen to the concerns of the neighborhood and come up with an idea that we think works under the S D O D guidelines, and we respectfully request that the council consider that in passing on the question of the S D O D designation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, to, to reiterate, our function tonight, and the function of the council throughout this process, is to, is to determine whether or not the property will be placed into a zoning known as S D O D, Special Development Overlay District. What the actual plan, once we either approve or disapprove, if we approve, the plan is that then the Planning Board decides and determines, working with the developer and with the neighbors, exactly what takes place there. The S D O D vote that we take tonight, if it is in the affirmative, doesn't necessarily say two units or twelve units. That's, that's the point, and I know I'm being ridiculously extreme, but that's the Planning Board function. However, it is a public hearing, and anybody that would like to have any other input tonight to the council, we would appreciate, and does anybody have any? Yes, Alan, just your name and precinct, please.
Alan Frulo, one-seventy, McKenney Street. The only thing I'd like to say is, you don't really, nobody knows once it's built. Mr. Linz addressed the situation of roommates and et cetera. You could have five units and still have roommates. It doesn't mean, nobody knows who's going to go in there and who's going to have a roommate. Okay, so when I was asked at the last meeting, what I thought would be fair, I said a three-family, with my opinion. And I would think if you put in three units, and they were really nice units, and today's market dictates a good price, people are going to buy them, people are going to use them, maybe a married couple, or woman, woman does this. But I don't necessarily see someone going in it and spending whatever the market, I think they were talking it would be three hundred thousand plus for a unit, all done up like that, Mr. Polino was at the last meeting and kind of went over some numbers for us, maybe three, three-fifty. So I just don't see someone spending that kind of money and then bringing, you know, renting it out or something like that. So that was just some of my concern there. And one other thing on the parking, if I may, I guess they said if you look at the building, the driveway would be on the right side of it as you're looking at it, and they would be parking around the back after they put up the retaining walls and all that. I have a concern that if you're, what if one car's going in, it's one-way, and one car's coming out, and now you're trying to back out, who's trying to back out? And at different times of the day, there are school children there. So there's, it's just so close to the school, there are some other safety problems to be considered with, with five units.
Thank you.
That's what I have to say, thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Polino?
Yes, I'd just like to say.
Jim, just give your name and precinct, sorry.
Jim Polino, resident of Winthrop, business owner of Winthrop.
Precinct?
Precinct five.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm really rusty. I just want to say, I'm not a neighbor, and I do listen to their concerns, and they're all legitimate concerns. One of the things that I think, if I were a neighbor, that I would be asking myself is, who's buying this building, and can they be trusted to improve the neighborhood? And that I can speak with some experience on that. The developer I know has done approximately fifty of these types of projects in the town in their career. And I can tell you that in every situation, they've been able to sell the property more than what I thought they would have sold it to, and a lot of that has sold it for. And that has to do with the type of construction that they do and the work they put in. And I also have to say that in every instance, they've taken a rundown building, some structurally unsound, and made the property viable, made it attractive, and made it worth, increased the value of the neighbor, the neighborhood's, the neighbor's property. That's been done consistently over and over again, and I want, I want you all to go by, if you have any questions on that, to go by nine four on Barab at the end of Winthrop Shore Drive at the Rotary. There was a two-unit building there that was structurally unsound, dilapidated, in an area where condominiums may be sold two-fifty, maybe three-hundred if they had an ocean view. The developer took that building, developed it, and selling those in the mid-fours, done a wonderful job, enhanced the whole beacon circle, and enhanced every neighbor, every, every neighbor's home, so that they in turn be able to get more value on their property. So that's really what I can speak to. I, I don't want to address the neighbor's concern, I don't live there, and I can, they do have their concerns. But one of the things that you can be sure of is that when this project's done, if the developer allows to have enough funding and, and sale price is enough to, to allow them to create something special there, that's exactly what they'll do, because they've done it fifty times before.
Thank you, Mr. Linz. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, John?
Yes.
John, I know I've asked you before, just your name and precinct.
John.
Thank you.
My main concern, as a, as the tool of butter, is there's an obvious land court, land issue that, I don't know what to say. It's an issue that on their plans, there's approximately eight-hundred-and-thirty-three feet of property we're, we're using now, they have put in their plans in order to get their parking situation for the S D O D. Currently, we're in the middle of filing an adverse possession case with Jim Cipolla to get, for, for that land that's eight-hundred-and-thirty-three feet. So it's not a little land that they want to take that we've, we've been using for forty years. So I don't know how this can pass, go forward, it should be postponed, this land issue is, is taken care of, because this land issue has a big impact on the S D O D. And as councils, we're thinking hard for the people, and not just the financial gain, I, I don't know what the whole financial gain going forward is with this issue I have, you know what I'm saying? It's just a, it's a, it's a burden on us that we weren't aware of until we looked closely to the plans, we weren't notified that, you know, the land was getting built on that we've been using for forty years. I mean, we, we bought the house with the fence there, right, that, you know, you know, we used it for forty years. So in turn, we had to file an adverse possession case, which is being filed right now. So I, I don't know how that ends up, if it does pass, and then whenever the case is closed, we are awarded our land back, what happens at that step?
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any further?
Would you want to, Mr.? May I respond to Mr.?
Yes.
So I'll take them out of order with respect to Mr. Cataldo's concern. First of all, there is no adjudication or court order relative to any adverse possession claim. It is, isn't as obvious as Mr. Cataldo likes to suggest it is, but more importantly, adverse possession is a title issue that involves boundary disputes between neighbors. It has nothing and no impact on this council's action. In fact, the council should be cautioned to take any action that may favor Mr. Cataldo in that respect based upon his allegations of adverse possession. There is nothing in the bylaw, in the S D O D, or the zoning bylaw that permits this council, the zoning board, the planning board, to take private action, or action that benefits a private landowner based upon alleged claim of adverse possession. Therefore, I think the issue, although Mr. Cataldo feels he has a claim and he's permitted to take whatever claim he wants, to whatever court he wants, really has no place in this forum, and certainly has no impact on this council's decision as to whether or not S D O D should be granted or should not. In fact, if the council were to take that into consideration, I think that would be improper, and I think any decision rendered that was adverse to my client based upon an adverse possession allegation is one that would, would give rise to certain judicial remedies that we would have. So I would just want to put that on the record as well. With respect to us building on his land, I think we made this clear in previous, previous presentations, we've had a professional land surveyor survey the land, we're confident where our boundary is located. If Mr. Cataldo feels that there was a boundary dispute, he has a right to bring a claim, he can bring that claim anytime he wants. As to whether or not that is disposed of favorably or unfavorably to my client, again, has no impact on this board's decision, this council's decision with respect to the S D O D. With respect to Mr. Frulo's comments about roommate situations, I think we pretty much exhausted the concern that it's more likely that when you have a very large unit that is unable to sell on the market, it's more likely to become a rental unit. And again, if my clients are holding property with very large units and a large number of bedrooms, the risk of it becoming a rental is much higher than, as opposed to a smaller arrangement or programming of the building. And in this particular case, I think by us laying out two bedrooms and one-bedroom units with the goal that these sellers condos would make them more feasible to sellers condos, but more importantly, I think the fact that you'd have a multiple number of units in the building where unit owners would be, I guess, interested in ensuring that homeownership continues, would have sort of some, some level of self-governance within the condominium association itself. We also committed to the neighbors that we would include, when we drafted the condominium documents, a provision for owner occupancy or to encourage owner occupancy. Under current guidelines for financing, it is necessary to have owner occupancy, especially in a new condo conversion. You'd have to have at least fifty percent of the units owner occupied in order to finance it to be available. So it's in everybody's interest to have these, the owner occupied units, and that is the goal of my client, and that's why four to five units works the best. Three units, and I understand, with all due respect to Mr. Frulo, he wants to suggest that we consider three units. Let me make it very clear, my client has no interest in doing three units here. We cannot do three units, it will not work at three units.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment? If not, before we close the public hearing, I'd just like to read the purpose, so everybody knows exactly what we're talking about as far as an S D O D. Purpose of the Special Development Overlay Districts, to encourage the redevelopment and reuse of existing non-residential properties in a manner compatible with the surrounding neighborhood or commercial areas, and to prevent the disinvestment deterioration of non-residential buildings that have become obsolete for their original purposes, by allowing other economic issues, including but not limited to residential uses, to protect and enhance the value of real property and provide the regulatory flexibility to achieve the foregoing. Is there any further input or comment? If not?
Just if I could add to the record that just, I know that's been mentioned before, but the Planning Board unanimously recommended to this council that this S D O D designation pass, and I just think that's also an important feature, the unanimity of the Planning Board doing so, I think should weigh heavily in this board's decision, this council's decision with respect to the vote they take.
Thank you. If there is no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Moving on. Public comment?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, correspondence. It's a busy month, April and May. We have, last week, we had the presentation on the Winthrop Spring Health and Wellness, Wellness issue, and Counsel Boyagi, you want to just give us a quick update on that?
Yes.
Under, when we could get up to new business, I just do have a communication on it. This Family Fun Day is down at the Gorman Fortbank School. Sean, would you want to comment on that?
Yeah, just know we're doing a fundraiser, a yearly thing, since it is our third year doing something in the spring, and this money's going towards the park at Fortbank School, a hidden camp that Mr. Fabiano's been working on with the committee very hard. So should be a great day, and I hope we get some support down there.
Very proud of what, what our parks committee has done over the last two years, and this Fabiano Playground is really a tremendous thing, and so we would appreciate any support. It's at the Gorman School on Saturday from twelve to four. Rich, you can put that in as part of the interview. We also had a communication from Massachusetts State Lottery referring to a request that, for the captain's quarters at five-fifty Pleasant Street, that they wanted to put in a keynote-to-go product, and that was a concern as to exactly what it meant, and the casino to, the keynote-to-go, that was a slip of the tongue, wasn't it? The keynote-to-go is, is very similar to a scratch ticket. You go into the store, you buy the keynote-to-go ticket, there is no board. We were thinking keynote is like you see in a, in a store, or a restaurant, or a bar, where they have the big thing on the wall, and they watch the keynote play. This is not, we've been assured by the, by the game, by the lottery commission that this is not, this is exactly the same process as you do when you buy a scratch ticket, except it's a keynote ticket. There is, and in order to collect on it, you bring it back to a facility, and they determine whether or not it's a winner. So there was some concern, we also don't have, according to the, they already have a lottery license there. The town doesn't have any control over lottery licenses, that's a state project, so it becomes sort of a non-issue, but I did want to at least bring up the fact that we did receive a letter stating that they were going to do that, and we do have it under the business. Earth's Cleanup Day, the Friends of Belle Isle Marsh in D.C. Owl will sponsor a spring cleanup, as Alan mentioned earlier, at the Kilmatten Path on Short Beach in Winthrop, Saturday, April twenty-fifth, from nine to noon, meeting at the parking lot. Refreshments will be provided to the volunteers. The Kilmatten Path is the walkway from the parking lot to the pedestrian bridge at the New Park at Short Beach. If you have not visited the New Park yet, please come and help clean the area and enjoy the great views of Belle Isle Marsh. You can see all the way to the Mystic Tovant Bridge from this, from the scenic overlook. Park has opportunities for viewing wildlife, snowy egrets, great blue heron, several species of diving and dabbling ducks and so forth. So it's another piece of the, of the spring cleanup day. I also just received a letter from Mass Development Finance that they will be considering the approval of a revenue bond for financing a project being undertaken by Hallmark Health System located in the cities in this attachment. They are having a public hearing, and they are considering making some investment at the fifty-two Prestav Medical Building, and if anybody would like to attend the public hearing, it's tomorrow, short notice, and it's twelve o'clock at the ninety-nine High Street. So if anybody would like to be there, be welcome to go. That's all I have for correspondence, unless anybody else on the council. Moving on to public comment, we had no public comment. Appointment? I want to appoint Matthew Crombie, who is the I want to appoint Matthew Crombie, who is the, who's filling in the vacancy at the high school present, at the present time, as the high school appointee to replace Ms. Bellisstock, who has resigned from the high school to serve on the school building assistance committee until the expiration of June thirtieth. And could I have a motion to affirm this?
Motion.
Motion by council.
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Delvento. There's no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. June. Thank you. Committee reports. Councilor Jewery.
The Committee on Committees met on April second. President with myself, Councilor Mail, Councilor Boyagi, and Council President Gill and Town Manager McKenna. We went through our annual reviews. What we do is we have the town manager perform the review of the town clerk because we feel that the town manager has a more, more interaction with the town clerk on a day-to-day basis than we would. So he reports, I recommend the evaluation to us, which was a positive evaluation on the town clerk. Overall, our duties were being performed admirably, and we talked about some areas of progress and some areas of opportunity, but overall, it was a very positive evaluation. We then went on to our council clerk to do an evaluation on Denise, which was extremely positive in all respects, but what we did do with that is we don't have a formal recommendation, a formal evaluation process and a formal evaluation tool for our council clerk. So we are having a subsequent meeting on April twenty-sixth, which I'll talk about in a minute, and one of the agenda items there will be to create a formal evaluation tool for the council clerk. We then went on to our town manager review, which is a form that we have filled out over the past several years, and I send out the form electronically to the council and they return it, and then we compile a compilation of those evaluations and discuss with the town manager his report card, so to speak. And the recommendations that we received, the evaluations went very well, very positively. Town manager expressed his views as to his vision for the future of the town. We recommended to enhance some of the evaluation tools that we had to try to have, to work on with community relations and such, but the town manager overall received very positive scores. If you're grading scores, it was the best evaluation he's received in his time here, and we're very pleased overall with his efforts. Also on that, during that committee meeting, we, actually, the town, the council president has been very much in favor, which we concur on, on having a, a meeting with all the committee members, as far as all the committees we have in town, which are several committees, to go over the process of how viable they are, how, what they're actually doing, what their mission statement is, and to come with us, come to us with a report of their progress. So we are conducting a meeting on April twenty-second, which has been posted for the Committee on Committees, in which we will be sending out invitations to all the committees that the council has purview over, and we will be asking them for a report, mission statement, how often they meet, and, and what they've done over the past year. So that will be held on April twenty-second, and I believe it's, the time is seven o'clock in the Harvey Room, April twenty-second. And that's it for that committee meeting.
Thank you. Councilor Bancory?
Yeah, we had three meetings between the Rules and Order Committee and the Public Safety Committee, and the first meeting was held, was the Public Safety Committee meeting, was held at the Senior Center on March thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen at seven P M. Councilor Cala conducted the meeting, and I was present as a member of that committee, which made up a quorum. In attendance were all the public safety people, numerous members of the council, numerous members of the school building assistance committee, people from Gilbane explaining the need and situation to close Main Street from Payson Street to Cross Street. There was one neighbor who was president, Virginia Brown, she represented the neighborhood and had comments and gave those comments. It was voted at that time by the committee to bring a motion to this committee under old business to close the street and do that under old business. That meeting lasted an hour. That meeting was not adjourned, but recessed to the following night, to a joint meeting of the Rules and Ordinance Committee and the Public Safety Committee. The Rules and Ordinance Committee met first on March thirty-first at seven oh three, present with myself and Councilor Delvento, which made up a quorum of that committee. Present were Peter Gill and the Public Safety Chiefs. First issue discussed was the Houseboat issue. It was the second meeting of the Houseboat issue. Numerous people from the Atlantis Marina spoke, numerous people that live in the Atlantis condominium spoke. There was a motion to recess and have a third Houseboats meeting on April fifteenth. That motion was made by Councilor Delvento and seconded by myself. At that April fifteenth meeting, we will be having our town council there, town harbor master there, and we are going to ask that, let it go out to each of the dockmasters from the different yacht clubs to be present to give us their feelings as to what needs to be done to develop a waterfront Houseboat bylaw. That meeting was adjourned, and a joint meeting of the Rules and Public Safety Committee was called to order at seven fifty P M. I chaired that meeting and co-chaired it with Linda Cala, Councilor Cala. Present were Councilors Delvento and Councilor Boyagi, which made up a quorum of that six-member committee. We needed four members to call that. Also present were Councilors Mail, Gill, and Fire and Police Chiefs. The issue before us was seven hundred and thirty Street. We had heard from, John Cataldo was one of the neighbors on his land issue, and informed us he was going to go with attorney Sipola and attempted to get an injunction. We heard, a motion was made by Councilor Delvento to send this matter to the council with no recommendation of the committee. Motion was seconded by Rich Boyagi, and it passed two to zero. The motion was made to adjourn, and the meeting was adjourned at eight ten P M. However, a motion will be made under old business to vote on this either one way or up or down under old business.
Thank you. Yes, could you just add the harbor management committee to your Houseboat?
Invitation. Jim, did you get that?
I did, yeah.
Okay, Councilor Delvento?
The Finance Committee met on April second, six thirty, here in the Harvey Room. Adjourned at six thirty. Present were myself, Councilor Boyagi, and Councilor Lettieri, also present, Council President Gill, and Council Vice President Mail. The first motion was, on discussion, was the thirty thousand dollars from the sale of graves, the cemetery fund for cemetery road repairs. That was voted with a positive recommendation to come to the council. And the second item was the fifteen thousand dollars for digitalization of town records. That was referred back to the original maker of the motion for clarification of policy and funding source. There was some confusion as to if we can have the council or the town manager to implement something for the town clerk without a solid funding mechanism, which will be required to be voted later for the actual amounts. So that was just sent back for clarification and a rewrite, and the meeting adjourned at six fifty.
What time was that meeting on?
Six fifty.
Any other reports on the committee?
Just have a question for Councilor Bancory on his report on public safety. The meeting at the Senior Center, you reported that a positive recommendation on the closing of the street between Payson and Cross. Was there also another recommendation that came out on extending, that you made a favorable recommendation on as far as extending the, the time of the late night work?
Oh, yes. We had already voted that.
We voted that that night.
Yes.
So that's done.
Any further committee reports or questions on the committee reports? If not, Mr. McKenna, Town Manager.
Yes, good evening. I'll try to be brief. I know we have a long agenda. I am pleased to report that the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center has started engaging in their efforts to address the matters that came up as part of our health study in terms of asthma and C O P D and the implementation of the Massport grant. They have hired Meredith Hurley under a stipend to begin the initiation of that effort through her office, and they are looking for space in, in Winthrop and are proceeding with plans to, to open up a health center. So I'm pleased that that engagement has happened. There seems to be a good working rapport with the town and with East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, and so it looks like that process is underway. National Grid representatives, the Vice President Dave Gandel and our regional representative also came out last week to discuss some concerns regarding some aerial wire and particular poles and some issues in town, double poles and the like, and they took a field trip with Chief Flanagan around town to look at some particular issues that the chief had, and I believe there's going to be some progress coming, forthcoming from them to address some of these issues that we were aware of, and they were happy that we made, made them aware of some of these issues, particularly the ones on Shirley Street, which they agree need to be addressed. We'd like to announce the thirty thousand dollar grant that was obtained through the efforts of Chief Delante and Joe Demolovitz from the Public Safety State Office. For thirty thousand dollars, we'll be installing video cameras in the police vehicles. Chief, you want to just give a quick comment?
Came from the Burn, Edward J. Burn Grant for police equipment, the maximum was thirty thousand dollars, and I think the award for us was twenty-nine nine seventy, to be exact. I think we rounded up to thirty for ease of comprehension. These will be video cameras on the mounted dashboard of each cruiser, also facing to the prisoner area of each cruiser, and they'll record on activation of lights or emergency sirens, and they'll have those triggers that will activate those cameras, and then stay activated and record these events. This is something that we keep with the unions on and have full discussion before implementation. But we just received the, the award letter yesterday, so the official letters will be coming in the next couple of weeks, and it'll give us time to prepare for them. Thank you.
Chief. I was joined with a number of my area managers and some mayors from the area cities to speak with Governor Baker last week on storm funding and the progress of, of that conversation he's had, I think, with the White House. He asked us to all get on board and then start encouraging our congressional leadership and delegation to, to petition the White House to release those funds under the three storm consolidated requests that he's made on our behalf. We also talked about the regional public transportation system and the issues that we're having, the report coming out this week, and we bantered about a number of issues regarding financing and the tough conversation that needs to be had with respect to how we're going to improve our public transportation system going forward. And we discussed the impact that opioids was having on our communities, and he was particularly impressed that Winthrop was leading the charge with Chelsea and Revere on our efforts to regionalize our strategies with respect to that issue and the progress we're making, and so we'll be preparing a report to go back to the governor on that issue. And we discussed livery services and the issue of needing to have some standards with respect to the Cory background checks and the safety standards that livery services of any sort need to comply with in order for people to know they're, they're going to be safe in using those services. And it was an excellent meeting, and we're to have more going forward, and I think the governor was very plain spoken with us and enjoyed talking, you know, coming from a visible background, he's very sympathetic to our, our challenges, our budget issues. He kept his promise on local aid, and, you know, I think, I think he's got some frustrations with respect to issues that he's looking at in the state budget, and he's going, I believe he and his team are going to really roll up their sleeves and take a hard look at, at the way the state does its business and try to be innovative. And so it was, it was a good conversation. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with Speaker DeLeo to discuss a few projects and get some updates to him on our Winthrop Street corridor petition to see if, where that stands, Miller Field and Lewis Lake dredging. So we've got a lot of requests into the Commonwealth right now, and certainly the speaker is our strongest advocate, and we're looking for a good conversation about those issues. And I'd like the CFO to give a quick update on where we are.
Sure, just things, you know, at that point in the year where we're looking to move some funds around in the general fund to close things out, there's a few motions in front of you tonight, and then there are a few others we have in subsequent meetings. We have GM's salary reserve applied that we need to distribute out. We've already calculated which departments, what departments need for the current year goals. We still have the Essex County, I think I briefed you in the past that there was one additional student there this year than what we got billed for. That's about twenty-one thousand dollars, and I'm still working with Hess, I know I've talked to both Hess, the gas that we, they claim we owe them some money, and negotiating, trying to get that down to something that, that we can settle on. So more to follow on some financial motions, but overall, the general fund flows on the right side of the ledger, so that's good news, and that's all I have. Barring any questions.
Thank you. Do you want to say?
I'll say. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Go ahead. So first of all, I should thank John Macero. He sent out a note a couple of weeks ago trying to help us get some people for the I T committee, and I was wondering if you could put it in your blog too because it would be helpful, so I'll send it along to you. There are a couple of questions on harbor operations, and this is really, you know, how, how does this get done? So we have a boat that's sunk in the harbor right now, and we, do we need a rule and regulation that addresses that? Do we have the appropriate capabilities to handle that right now?
Yes, we received an update from our Harbor Master Department on that on Monday. Good news is, is that doesn't pose an environmental threat at the moment, but we're still examining that, and, you know, if we identify something there, we'll have to take steps to boom it. The owner of record has been notified, and we have to come out and be compelled to deal with it, and if they don't, then after a certain period of time, we have the right to go forward and, and because of safety issues and environmental concerns, take whatever steps we think are necessary. It may be that we don't want to touch it at all, given that we need to take an inventory of what's, what's there. So a very, it's a delicate matter that we have to proceed with some caution on to make sure that we don't inherit a liability by trying to do the right thing. So we have to make sure that the owner of record takes responsibility, and if they don't, then we will proceed with any recourse we have to deal with it.
See, because my concern is that we don't have the right, you know, like, we're sitting there right now, we don't want to touch it, we, and, you know, I don't know that we ask boaters if they have a certificate of insurance to cover that type of thing, and if we go out and we pick up the eight or ten thousand dollars it's going to cost to yank it out, and the person's not a citizen of the town, then we got a boat that's been underwater, and I can't imagine that the eight thousand dollars of salvage would cover the boat, and I just didn't know if we had the right rules in place.
The state plays a role in this, you know, because this is not the first time this happens, you know, and they have resources in cases where these situations occur in the waters, where they may come out, lend some advice, some assistance, and, you know, we may have to seek some, some of their guidance on it before we touch it, for the very, very reasons you're talking about, because we don't inherit the liability that comes with it.
All right. So is it possible to coordinate with the D P W, with the harbor, to get them some help? And I'm sure they pay for it, but they need some heavy equipment to, they get some stuff that's floating down there, there's some floats and that's, I don't know.
I understand that Harbor Masters have a, have a, you know, have made inquiries on the vessel, and will be followed.
And who would make, but they also have some inquiries about, you know, who can you... And who would make, but they also have some inquiries about, you know, who can use the showers, so they find a lot of times five minutes to closing and people come in. And in terms of the very showers, is that a public room that anybody can use? Is it bar-specific group of people? Is it their responsibility to set up their own rules, you know, six that we close at seven, you know, who does that?
The Harbor Management Committee has been... Let's move that back to the Harbor Management Committee. I don't think it's appropriate for us to debate and go back and...
We're not debating, we're trying to find out who's the appropriate person.
Turn it back to the Harbor Management Committee before we move on.
You know, I have a couple of others, I'm sorry, that's what's here. So what, one, I know in the past, and it's budget season, I know in the past we've talked about the fact that, and you even mentioned it in your spring meeting, that we're the training team for Massport in terms of fire, and is it possible to get some type of agreement with them that if, you know, employees take in before we get a chance to amateurize their, you know, funding that we put up?
Oh, you should mention that just tonight. I enquired with the chief, because I myself am thinking along those same lines, and having a discussion with the Speaker tomorrow, I wanted to pose a question that might be something we could discuss with the fire chief about looking at some reimbursement for training in particular because of this issue.
And just one more thing I saw on, I think it was the Beacon or something, came out from MMA today about the opportunity for our employees to get some type of grant that was like 23, 2400. I don't know if you had a chance to see that yet, but...
Is that for the professional development?
I think so, yes, and it was some Fridays and they take it, it was...
Yes, we have one candidate that's looking to apply.
I just, all right, I thought it was a great opportunity, so.
Yeah.
Any further questions for the manager?
I have one quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Any update on the beach as far as the sand? Is the sand done? Because I've heard a lot of people talking to me about that there was a lot of rocks used at the Highland End, and you know, people are saying they ran on the sand, people are saying different things. Can you just give us an update if it's going to stay like that?
I went out there today to take my own look at the situation, and clearly the cobbles are very apparent, and it doesn't look like much of a beach in certain sections, so I appreciate the general concern there. One would have to think that more sand has to go down in order for it to be stabilized, and I'm sure this winter took its toll on the beach, and then I believe the DCR understands that they may have to come out, in fact, and replace what was lost and take a measure of where, you know, what this winter really meant to that beach and re-engineer or stabilize areas that may have been affected. All in all, the reports are that the beach performed extremely well. So, you know, substantively, that beach works now. I think aesthetically and certainly to accommodate, you know, the other uses for that beach, you need more sand, and so I would think that they would come out and dress it as it needs to be dressed.
Could we just get an update on that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for the manager?
Yes, a quick one, and it's the parks with the snow removal. What do we have for a plan to get rid of the stuff that we've left on there, and how soon do you think we can get on those fields?
Ingleside Park notwithstanding, because that took a particular severe hit this year. Sean and I drove around to all the parks today, and I'm happy to report the parks are better than I certainly thought they would be. There needs to be some wounds stitched on a few locations, but all in all, they are in good shape. Veterans Road needs some healing, and they've got some snow still on the surface, and I believe over the next couple of days with the rain that's coming and warmer weather, you'll see that snow melt, and Council Calla and his crew have already designed, you know, plans for addressing the surface of that facility, so that's to come. You know, Coughlin looks good, Pond Street looks good, and Hanaford looks good, and Crested Ave, but for a couple of minor, you know, issues, looks pretty good. Ingleside is going to need some serious attention, but I've been instructed that, you know, they're going to go out the grader and do what they need to do to tidy it up and replace some, you know, roam and do some seeding and do the things they need to do to bring it back to where it needs to be, and that'll happen over the course of the next few weeks. Thank you.
Any further questions, sir? Moving on to the school department update. Mr. Messero and Mr. Fromby are working together to, for the rest of the school year, running the operation at the high school. As we know, the principal had resigned, so they've stepped up and there's a team working together for the rest of the school year. Hats off to our cheerleaders who became national champions, as we all know, a great accomplishment. Council Boyagen is going to speak about the Wellness Week, which is being run as part of the school, is going to speak about that later on in the meeting. The girls' basketball team came up with an impressive record of 20 and 6, capturing the Northeast Conference champs. Boys hockey captain was named, Pat Tedesco was named a Boston Herald All-Star. The advanced elementary band, which is brand new, is moving on to a competition at King Philip Regional High School. Things are going along with the schools in a nice, fast pace, lots of athletic stuff, lots of drama stuff, and academic stuff, so we like what we're seeing. Under old business, live a motion, Council Boncorrie, for the Town Council to approve the petition of Oceanside Development LLC to amend the zoning, town width of zoning map to include 60 Herman Street Winthrop within the SDOD zoning, but to take any other action relative there too. Motion by Council Boncorrie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council of Terry. Discussion on the motion.
Council President.
Yes, Council Bro.
I'd like to say that it was a very difficult decision for me to make, come to. Council, Mr. Linz is a very persuasive speaker and did a great job presenting, a very good job, very, very good job, and he should be commended on that. But I have to think about the transition in government from town meeting to town council, and some of the concerns that people had at the time was a lack of voice. They felt that when to a council form of government, they wouldn't be heard. And in the past week, I've taken several calls today, someone came by my house last night, I still have a petition signed by 29 people in the neighborhood that say that they do not want it to go into an SDOD. That being said, I feel that I have to represent the people in my precinct, and I have to vote against this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, and ask for a roll call vote. This vote requires a two-thirds majority of the council, not just a two-thirds majority of those voting, so it takes six positive votes for this motion to pass. Councilor, I mean, Councilor Crisp, as you call it.
Council Sanford.
Thanks.
Sorry.
I'm going to vote no.
Council Boncorrie.
I think it doesn't make a difference what anybody votes, but we passed the SDOD back some time ago so we could develop properties. This is a problem property that needs to be developed. I think these gentlemen have done a great job with other projects that they had. I think that they have gone over and above, we've all gone over and above, listening to the neighbors, the, we've had so many open hearings, I know that I've had two as the chairman of the public safety, as chairman of the rules in joint meeting with Public Safety, and we've heard all the concerns of the people involved, and it bothers me because many of the opponents are very close friends of mine that I've grown up with all my life. But I feel that the right thing for this town at this time is to allow this SDOD to get this building cleaned up and in good shape, to make it an attractive piece of property rather than a firetrap nuisance that it is. I don't want to see a church going in there, and I don't want to see it being two huge apartments with people just gang living in, and I vote yes for this.
Council Bro.
No.
Councilor Terry.
Well, I think it's prudent of us to take the advice, weigh very heavily the advice of the planning board, which voted unanimously for this, and I concur with Council Boncorrie on, I would like to see it developed in a way that's prudent, and I think these gentlemen have proven that they have a track record of doing that, and I also look at the possibility of it remaining a house of worship or a performing arts center, which to me is more traffic and more problems. I am voting yes.
Council Boyagen.
I'm going to vote no, out of similar concerns to Council of Rowan in regards to representing the people of the district and what they're doing in that area.
Council Davento.
Normally, I really try to defer to the precinct counselor for guidance on this. The other situation we do have to look at is the condition of the structure of what's I am torn, but I do think there are some serious, serious issues revolving around parking and around the buildability of the parking lot, but that being said, the planning board can't execute anything if they can't get parking in there to accommodate. So I am going to vote yes, because I think that the planning board is going to go along if that parking can't be established, it can't be, they can't get any units in there, so that's going to be a requirement.
Council Calla.
In order to, you know, there's a perception out there, because I sell real estate and I'm in the real estate business, that everyone seems to think that I would have a personal gain in approving this property, and I have not had any actual personal real estate dealings with the developer, and I do feel that they do an excellent job, I have to say. If you do see some of the property that they rehab, it's really, really, very, very nice. At our March 30th meeting, however, I made a statement that night, and I said I was going to recuse myself from voting, and I feel I should stick with that, so I am going to recuse my vote.
Vice President Mayo.
One of the most disappointing parts of my entire time in Winthrop was how I felt the Highlands was handled during the building of the condominiums, which put 450 units and almost 1,000 cars in my neighborhood, and I'm very, very sensitive about that for those people that come from this neighborhood. It's 40 years now, and it still burns me the same way as it did when it happened, and I felt the town let us down, so I find myself in a very unusual position of having to look at this situation in this time, and I've sat through all of your meetings and I've been through some of their properties, and I think the planning board is the best place for this because it will give you folks the opportunity to sit there and give your thoughts on what goes on and how it's being built, and I was also, I thought four units was acceptable. I've now seen how they've structured the five, and I think through the discussion with the architects and the functional resources, the attorneys and the architects on the planning board, that this is the best place, and I will vote yes for it.
President Gill.
Guess my vote is academic at this point. However, given the situation that we have here and given my respect for the planning board and their decision to move forward on this, but even more so their track record over the last three major projects that have gone on in town, and the way that they have maintained the integrity of those projects from day one through the completion, again, I have a great deal of respect for them, I have a great deal of confidence that they would do the right thing. I will vote yes, although my vote at this point is academic.
Council President, what terms or reconsiderations could I make at this point, if any?
The rule for reconsideration is that someone from the prevailing side has to ask for the reconsideration. It must be done at the same meeting or the following meeting. However, this particular petition gives one more opportunity. Some things you have to wait two years if you don't reconsider at the proper time. The ruling that I have gotten from the, from our town council, the town attorney, is that should this be, should this request be voted no, the petitioner can then stop the process all over again without having to wait two years. So should this be voted down tonight, then Mr. Linz could tomorrow petition the council, who would then refer to, and I'm not looking for audience head shakes, I'm just answering the question of the council who has asked what's the procedure. So the procedure is someone from the prevailing side, that would be the no's, could ask for reconsideration. It would have to be reconsidered either tonight or at the next council meeting.
So in order to change a vote, if I decided to make a change on my vote, what would have to happen?
You would have to ask for reconsideration, and then the council would vote yes or no for the reconsideration.
I'd like to ask, did someone recommend reconsideration?
Okay, we have a motion from Council Sanford to reconsider the previous vote. Is there a second?
Just a point of water on you. I'm just a tad confused. Pardon me, okay, I'm just a tad confused, I just want to make sure this goes down the right way if it's going to happen. The prevailing side, the majority of the votes is, I don't know how that would, I'm looking into the town manager for kind of somebody for reconsideration, although it didn't pass, the majority of the votes cast were yes.
That's correct, but it didn't prevail.
Okay, I wasn't sure if the majority of prevailing side...
It was actually a negative vote. So in this case, whoever the prevailing side is, in this case, one of the three who voted no, would have to make a motion to reconsider, and that would have to be seconded to be acknowledged.
Right. Council Sanford made the motion. What I'm not clear on, maybe you can correct me, to reconsider, Phil is our rules, to reconsider, we have a motion to reconsider. Do we have a second?
Can I make a second?
Second by Council, second by Council Calla. Do we need a two-thirds vote, Phil, to reconsider? No, just majority, okay. All those in favor of reconsideration, please say aye. Opposed? No. We have two that have voted no, we have seven who have voted positively. The motion is now reconsidered. Council Sanford.
Yeah, you know, I've been on vacation and I've missed a couple of the meetings. Upon hearing some of the, some of the folks who spoke in favor and seeing some of the projects, upon talking to some of the neighbors who I have talked to, and taking into consideration and respect both counselors at large and Paul Bro, who represents the neighborhood, and taking into consideration that this goes forward to the planning board, I'd like to at least have that opportunity there. The neighbors will have an opportunity to speak at the planning board hearing. I'm not necessarily in favor of as many units, but we don't have the opportunity to vote for how many units are here, so I'd like to see it at least go forward to the planning board at this point in time. I'd like to make my no vote a yes.
Is there any discussion, further discussion on the reconsideration? We are now reconsidering the motion that the town council approved the petition of Ocean City Development LLC to amend the town of Winthrop zoning map so as to include 60 Herman Street Winthrop within the SDOD zoning, take any other action relative there too. Council Crisp.
Voting again?
Yes.
Council Calla?
Still a second.
Council Sanford?
Yes.
Council Boncorrie?
Yes.
Council Bro?
No.
Council Terry?
Yes.
Council Boyagen?
No.
Council Davento?
Yes.
Vice President Mayo?
Yes.
President Gill?
Yes. There being six votes in the affirmative, the motion is passed.
Council President, I believe the law is a three-quarters vote. It would require seven votes to pass.
According to town council and according to Chapter 40, it's two-thirds, six votes.
Chapter, I disagree. I disagree if the town...
I'll rule it six votes if it needs to be reconsidered at a future time. The ruling that I have gotten from town council is six votes, two-thirds of the council, not two-thirds of those voting. Mr. McKenna, do you have?
Your issue, if I could just explore the issue, your issue is you're referring to the petition that was signed, and therefore demanding 70% election.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five, rather, percent election.
What's the, oh, you're not referring to the vote per se, you're, I didn't understand what you meant.
State law.
State law.
What's the state law with regard to the SDOD?
The zoning, if there's a petition, and I'm not as well briefed as I should be, but forgive me, but my understanding is if the petition is valid and has been declared by the clerks as certified with 10%, I believe, of the affected area, and those sort of signatures are certified, that raises the bar on the vote of how many required to vote on this as a matter of procedure. And so I would ask that the council consider hitting the pause button, and we get an opinion of council on the issue, if that in fact is a legitimate complaint.
Given that situation procedurally, when you said petition, Council Verone, I apologize, I thought you meant the petition by Attorney Linds. That was the petition to do this. You're talking about a petition that was signed by neighbors.
That's correct.
That's a separate thing, okay. Procedurally, the vote has been taken, and I guess the process would be that, I don't know, fill me in, what's the process?
Correct, the vote has been taken, now a complaint.
Now a challenge has been made.
A challenge has been made, correct. And so I think we can go back, we may have to repost this council's to clarify the issue.
Given that a challenge has been made, is it appropriate to post this again for the next meeting for confirmatory vote? Does that work?
If it properly falls under the notice provisions of open meeting, I believe you could continue the matter until such time as you're ready to vote on it.
Council Boncory, do you have an opinion on this, as to how do we handle this at this point? We've made a vote, the vote has been challenged.
The issue, and I think we have to get clear, is because there was one recusal before, if two votes were no, it would pass, it would automatically pass seven.
Right.
But because of the refusal, I think it's a question and an issue as to whether it's the three-quarters or two-thirds. So I think we should get, even though we have three attorneys in that room, I think we should get a ruling.
That's a problem, we have three attorneys, you can get all confused.
I think we should get a ruling from our old attorney that will cover us if there was a lawsuit.
Okay, I would say that we have had a challenge, the motion has passed, we've had a challenge, we will confirm at the next council meeting, we will put it on the agenda for the next council meeting, and we will affirm the vote based upon our advice by town council. Did you have?
One very quick comment, just for the record, obviously I'm gonna preserve my right to object to the procedural defect to the extent that prejudice is the developer's rights, but more importantly, we did run the record previously that we did object to the petition as well. I know that the petition was received, I don't know that we've ever seen or know if the council's been presented with the certification by the town clerk, but we reserve our right to object to the petition as well.
By the petition, you're referring to the neighborhood petition, not your own petition?
I have a copy of the certified petition.
We still object to it, it's our rights.
And we also have the guidelines of distance from the property type of thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That was all.
So given that, Council, if you would forward that, would you check that out for us, Mr. McKenna?
Yes, I will.
Forward that certified petition to Mr. McKenna. Determine what needs to be done, and at the next meeting, we will clarify, and we will, if necessary, re-vote. Any further comments on that? Moving on with. Councilor employee reviews, could I have a motion?
The issue has decided, the case is kubiat, so that you give her a reference to it, okay?
Kubiat.
Kubiat.
That's the case on the neighborhood petition?
Yeah. Is the petition valid, and have some of them already withdrawn in meetings, because we have two meetings? I don't know if the petition falls off, that's part of the reason why I'm not gonna give an opinion.
Right, okay.
And I don't wanna give an opinion, because I'm not a town attorney.
And I don't want to either. So basically, what we've done, we voted it, and we're gonna bring it up at the next meeting to either confirm or re-vote. And Jim, would you check with her, is it proper to re-vote it, or does this vote tonight count as the final vote?
Right.
Yeah, because if this vote tonight counts, yeah, this probably does, counts as the final vote. But.
Or if you can ask for reconsideration yet again.
Right, that's true, yeah, at the next meeting, we can do that, yeah.
Because, I mean, did we vote under false intentions?
That's right, exactly.
And not that, I'm looking to, right, you know.
That's what the employees get paid for.
Why would we do that? No, it's okay to reconsider at the next meeting, as long as it's the next meeting, not the, not two meetings away.
Correct, Mr. McKenna?
Moving on, could we just have a motion to approve, to accept Mr. Leteri's report from the committee on committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Council Boyage, seconded by?
Council Leteri, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
Cemetery transfer. I move by, request by Council James, the town manager, can I approve it, move that the council authorize the transfer of $30,000 from the sale of lots and drains, Fund 584, fund road repair at the Belle Isle Cemetery, or take any action relative thereto. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President? That was heard by the finance committee, and it was moved forward with a positive recommendation.
Okay, finance committee has moved forward with a positive recommendation, so there's no second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Motion by Vice President Mayo, the request that the town manager develop a plan to enable the town clerk's office to provide digital documentation management services for citizens beginning July 1. Included in this request is funding for up to $15,000 for the implementation of the appropriate software installation training, to come from the council reserve or take any action relative thereto. Council Leteri, Council Delvento, could you just repeat?
Mr. President, the finance committee ran that, that was referred back to the maker of the motion for some clarification, where the town, it's the town manager to the town clerk, the town clerk's under us, and if, maybe you could sit with the town manager and work on how that would work motion-wise, because it would also require a second vote for the actual funds transfer. You know, we'd be holding the council liable to make an affirmative vote at a future, at a future time.
Okay, so we have a motion that has come out of finance with the, to be referred back to the maker of the motion. On the motion as presented by Council of Mayo, do we have a second?
What are we seconding?
We have a motion made by Council of Mayo that says, "A motion is made to request the town manager to develop a plan to enable the town clerk's office to provide digital document management services for citizens beginning July 1, 2015." Included in the request is a funding, can we finish reading the motion, please? "Including in this request is a funding of up to $15,000 for the implementation of appropriate software installation and training, come from the town council reserve, take any action relative thereto." Do we have a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Council Verone.
Mr. President?
Mr. Council Delvento?
Just a point of order, the finance committee referred back because it felt the motion was inappropriate and inconsistent with the guidelines of the charter as to how it was written, and at this time, we've asked that it be considered an out-of-order motion, as it's not, as the first part of the motion requires a second vote of the affirmative for the actual funding transfer, you know, the council at this point would be voting that something that in the future would have to require an affirmative vote again, and it's holding a future council responsible to make a positive vote on that, you know, to implement it. So we just ask.
Given that, go ahead.
I thought, to simplify, shouldn't it be coming from the town manager versus a counselor?
Right.
So that's where our issue is.
We discussing this, or? Yeah, go ahead, it's a motion.
So personally, I think in the three minutes that it was discussed, left a lot for my taste there, I'd be happy to make a motion to take the funding out, in which case, it wouldn't have to go to finance, and in which case, I don't see where it would be any different than any other policy decision, and that is simply to ask the town manager to come up with a plan to enable us to move digital documentation. Right now, we have something like $25,000 a year that we're spending to correct and mitigate our document policies in the past, primarily because that's how it was handled. But at the same time, we are not turning off a leaky faucet. Every day, we continue to make more documents, and every day, we will at one point have to pay to have those documents digitized. I have met with individuals, the clerk has met with individuals, the town council president has been involved in the discussion, and we have seen an easy-to-install type of system that would enable us to go off and stop, in a sense, the bleeding. You wouldn't fix a leak in the pipes by putting a bucket underneath it, you would fix the pipe. We have a broken pipe, we continue to create digital, we continue to create paper documents. So I would amend my motion to take off included as the requesting for funds, and allow the motion to stand as the first sentence.
So you wanna make a? I think I'm looking at this motion, and I think that this is an administrative responsibility, I think Mr. McKenna on this.
It's a policy decision. Where were your policies?
I think it's an administrative decision, I'm gonna rule a motion out of line. Moving on to the next. Additional storm damage, Stephen, did you have a brief report on that?
Yes, I did. Since last reading, thankfully, you voted in the $20,000 for the temporary pothole repair. We got a thorough assessment of the road and storm damage on the roadways. I've identified approximately $150,000 worth of damage to the roadways, it's beyond simple pothole repair. With the $41,000 that we've gotten from the state for the rapid recovery money, and your $20,000, it still puts us around $100,000 short on the grind and overlay needs for many areas in town. So I'm hoping the council will consider bumping up that initial $20,000. Also wanted to address the fields, we did, we speak to what was needed to address the fields. We're gonna need loom, we're gonna need seed coming for the end of fiscal year. My budget is extremely tight on the highway side. I'm hoping we'll also consider $5,000 for seed and loom to restore Ingleside and Veterans Field.
Mr. McKenna, your feelings on how to deal with this? Would you wanna prepare a motion for us for the next meeting?
Yes, I would, yes.
Is time-wise, is that, if we present it at the next meeting, then we're gonna have to advertise it, and then we're gonna have to have another? Are we okay with that?
Well, you know, we'll make do for the time being, and follow the procedures as necessary. But yes, as long as we can supplement back to those accounts, we should be all right.
So it would actually be a motion on the 21st, which wouldn't be voted until the first meeting?
Yeah, voted probably first meeting of May, yeah.
Does that work?
That would work, yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council?
Can I ask, we talked about two really big, different things, the major, some major street and sidewalk type work, a repair, but also can we look at maybe splitting them out, and some money, the parks and fence money, maybe can be a smaller amount to get going first on, we're gonna have to advertise the second component.
We'll break them out into two motions.
Split it up into two motions, so that we can.
So we can move on the first, and the second would take two meetings, yeah.
Thank you. Say that again?
Well, I think the council's suggesting we come under the $25,000 threshold, and move forward on, you know, the parks aspect of the motion as quickly as we can.
So we could do that at the next meeting?
We don't have to advertise it, yeah.
We won't have to advertise it, some of the 25,000?
Right.
Very good. So you're thinking you're gonna need 25 plus 100, so 24, 25 plus 100, correct? 25 for the parks?
Well, whatever the numbers were going to.
Five thousand.
Oh, five thousand, oh, okay. Council Leteri?
Well, this, I think, is kind of.
One other time, Council Leteri?
Kind of immediate attention.
We work the. Present motions that fit within the framework of.
Well, because earlier in your presentation, you had said in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna work on Ingleside Park. Now, if that's considered an emergency motion for five grand to get that started, I would like to ask the council to waive the rules to pass that, so Stephen can get going with that.
Motion by Council Leteri to waive the rule, seconded, I believe it's two C, and. Move forward. Seconded by Council Boyage. All those in favor of waiving the rule?
Hold on.
Hold on, we're gonna just waive the rule first, and then we'll get to the motion.
Well, the question is on waiving the rule.
Right.
What constitutes an emergency?
It's not an emergency, any council requests it.
Okay.
No, it requires that it's emergency for public safety, and it is, because it's dangerous.
Fine, I'm for it anyway, I just wanted.
All those in favor of waiving the rule, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous on the motion.
First, I'd like to clarify a number first, if maybe Stephen could just give us some more background on it. Are you comfortable with that number?
I'm comfortable with the number. I do wanna be clear, though, that the initial works is gonna start on Veterans Field. It's in a drier condition to be able to start working on, probably next week. Ingleside Park will still require a little bit longer to dry out, it's very much saturated at the moment, and the loom isn't gonna, it's just gonna turn to mud, I think.
But is the 5,000 gonna cover both?
5,000 will cover both.
But it just won't, it will be Veterans Field first?
It'll be Veterans.
But it will be for the both fields?
That's correct.
That's fine.
Okay, so Council Leteri has made a motion to transfer 5,000, do you have a source you wanna come from?
Well, we'd ask for reserve at this point.
From council reserve, so transfer 5,000 from council reserve?
I'd like to amend it to $8,000, and I know there's gonna be some emergency fence issues, and we, fencing is critical in these parks, so I'd like to.
I'm impressed that there's a broken fence that's pretty bad.
I don't want any kids getting hurt in the interim.
Proceedurally, Council Leteri had made a motion for 5,000, did we have a second on that?
I seconded it.
Seconded by Council Boyage, we now have amendment to the motion, instead of 5,000, by Council Delvento, to make it 8,000, do we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Council Verone. All those in favor of the motion of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, all in favor of the motion as amended to appropriate, to transfer $8,000 from council reserve for the purpose of restoring parks. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Council?
Excuse me, I'm not feeling well, I have to step up.
I had put in a response, a draft response to the planning board regarding the Somerset Avenue project. I'm sure you've all had a chance to review it. If there's no question or any suggestion on it, I'm just gonna forward that to the planning board. Moving on. One second, yeah.
Is that, may I ask, is that responsive, okay, to send out?
Yeah, yeah. If there's no objection, and I see no objection, so if you'll go ahead and prepare that, and I'll sign it. New business. Council Leteri, I move that for the town of Winthrop, Section 100402, that the town council authorized a temporary closing of Main Street, Payson Street to Cross Street from June 1 to December 31, 2015, for middle high school construction, or take any other action relative thereto. We did have a public hearing on that tonight, is there any, is there a second to Council Leteri's motion? Second the motion?
By the Public Safety Committee.
Okay, coming out, seconded by the Public Safety Committee, any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Oh, did somebody have discussion? Yes, Council, I'm sorry. Did you have discussion?
No, it's. No, just a clarification on the writing, it's missed, it says June, it should be May.
May 1st to December 31st.
Okay, so, just a correction on, then it should say May 1st to December 31st?
Correct, yes.
So I will reread the motion that the, that the town, per the code of town of Winthrop, Section 10.04.02, that the town council authorized temporary closing of Main Street, Payson Street to Cross Street from May 1st to December 31st for middle high school construction, or take any other action relative thereto. The motion was made by Council Leteri, seconded by Council Committee Callum. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Did we vote at the special meeting last week to extend the construction hours? I thought we did.
Well, we voted on the construction hours for the month of April. We were under the impression. We were under the impression that it was a 10-day process. We did not, at the public safety meeting, however, it came up that that 10 days is not 10 consecutive days, and they would like it to extend through May 31st. It would still only be 10 to 12 days, but it would be sporadic throughout those two months.
But I think, I think at the special meeting after we voted that, didn't we?
No, because we had, that wasn't brought up. At the special meeting after, we voted through April 31st. We voted April 1st to April 31st. Just procedurally, because I know at the public safety meeting after, when Counsel Boncorrie made his recommendations, he also included a second recommendation to extend it to May 31st, so I would just like the procedural to extend.
But I had to leave before the other meeting, and we got the other meeting, you had a meeting to approve it.
I'm pretty sure we didn't, yeah. Denise, can you look back to the minutes?
It was just till April 30.
Yes, the first time was April 30, but I thought that night that we... Let me just check the minutes here. You know what, just to confirm it, I, per Counsel Luttrell, I move that the code of town of Winthrop, 8.020.060, that the town council authorized a temporary extension of construction working hours for the middle high school construction to May 31st or take any other action relative thereto. Any discussion, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Counsel Boncorrie. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Motion by Counsel Luttrell that the town council granted easement authorizing national grid to construct a line of underground conduit under Cross Street to the property line of the Winthrop Middle High School or take any other action relative thereto. This has been advertised for public hearing on the 21st of April, and I would suggest that we would vote on it at that time, so I'm just reading it to the record. I don't think that there's any need to refer it out, I think we can just go ahead with the public hearing on the 21st and vote it on the 21st. Jim?
I've seen the easement, it's a fairly standard easement language for underground conduit across Payson, underneath and out of sight, so.
Okay, Counsel Bayasian?
And just per clarif, is there any need to refer that to public safety or...
Well, that was my question, I don't think there is, because it's just a, it's a dig and...
Okay.
Okay, the next motion to, I'm going to refer the next four motions to finance. That is, a transfer of $7,480 from site plan review, offset receipt account 58752-59600 to the general fund to fund a special article known as a center business district master plan, and I will just refer that to finance. Second one, shouldn't I go to economic development soon? No, I don't think so, not at this point. After the, after the study staff, so I'm just going to refer that one to finance. I'm also going to refer the 6910 for the MWRE assistance for the flood map to finance. I'm going to refer the council town manager contract settlements for the DPW to finance. I'm going to refer the $42,000 from recreational fund retained earnings to finance, and I'm referring the 2.8 financing for the replacement of aged water main and lead services to finance. We've also scheduled hearings as appropriate for those, Denise, for the next meeting. Okay, moving on. I had made a response to the planning board regarding the center business district request. That's we already voted on that. Ferry credit to the waterways. Is that motion to Counsel Vice President? I don't have the power to open this on the computer, but I thought I had it. Yeah, that's it, yeah.
The motion is...
Page 41. The motion reads that I hereby, this is by Vice President Mail, I hereby make a motion that for the 2015 voting season, each waterway licensee purchased shall be provided four ferry tickets to be used in this calendar year for no charge or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Seconded by Counsel Bayasian for second, for a discussion. Anybody like, yes, Counsel?
Is the ferry going to be in the water this year?
According to the reports, it's supposed to be here in late August. Any other comments?
I mean, we talked at the other, at the finance meeting, that's something that's up for discussion about whether we should delay it or not till, since we're going to miss the peak season anyways, and wait till the next year, so, I mean...
But that's not the motion?
Correct.
And it doesn't relate?
No, it was just clarifying what Counsel Cal was asking.
Again, just for clarification, for my edification, what's the purpose of?
So, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
The history of this is that recently we appropriated $29,000 from the waterway fee to support the ferry. The waterway fee is not dedicated to the ferry, and it is using money earmarked not for the ferry. So my feeling was, since the people who bought waterway tickets, waterway fees, had contributed, they should also benefit. They put the money up, they benefited, and I actually think it serves a better purpose. As a boat owner, I am not likely using the ferry, at least based on my past experience. I have my own boat, I choose to use that. Now, I understand the ferry is an enhanced item, and I have seen through meeting with the harbor management people, also boat owners, how interested they are in getting behind the deal. So I think this could be a very, very good marketing plan for several reasons. One, people would have the opportunity of using it that otherwise wouldn't use it. They're already boaters, they may have some good ideas about it, and it would help take what is probably going to be a soft start and provide some passengers for the ferry. And of course, there is not necessarily a charge other than lost revenue, but the lost revenue is like a coupon. If I wasn't going to use it in the beginning, I wouldn't be using it, so there's no out-of-pocket expense.
Given the fact that...
Mr. President? With all due respect to the council, and I, please don't take this the wrong way.
How would I?
But the fees are set by, at the, the fees are set by a vote at the recommendation of the town manager. The harbor waterways rules and regulations are established and set. Wouldn't this be like a change in ordinance as opposed to, good intentions, I'm not saying those intentions aren't good, but do we have the ability to even do this with the way the free, with the voting of fee structure?
It's an open question. I would suggest that we develop the tickets first. We haven't even printed them yet. I would submit that a lot of what we're talking about with the ferry is very much an evolving conversation. I like the intent that the counselor is suggesting, but I think we need to prepare for what we are going to be doing this fall with some precision. And to have, you know, a schedule and tickets and the validation of those tickets and the value of those tickets has not even been set. That has to be set by the council. We know what they are in theory, but you have not taken a vote yet to set that price, nor, so the creation of the value hasn't occurred yet, okay? So that's all part of a plan that needs to get rolled out over the next few months. And at some point, you know, you can then look at offering discounted, you know, aspects of that. You may want to have a senior discount, you may want to have a child discount or a handicap discount. All of that is part of a suite of actions I would submit that you would take once you've developed the flow, you know, and look at the program and told it, and say, okay, this is what we want to do.
Listen, Counsel Mayor.
If not for the kind nature of the council to give away the voters' money, we wouldn't have this situation. But the fact is, no matter how you look at it, the ferry is not funded through the harbor way fee. We've had this discussion, and we've gone back and forth on it. I don't see anything in the ordinance that says the ferry should be funding it. They did it, and I think that they should be at least recognized for that.
Given that philosophy, with all due respect, I feel that this motion would be in conflict with the motion in a vote that we took a couple of weeks ago that was dividing out the ferry appropriation, dividing it out into three categories, one of which was, only a piece of which was the harbor management, that was defeated exactly at the point that you're bringing up of where the funding for the ferry is coming from. I feel that this is in conflict with that motion.
I don't see where it comes from.
Moving on. Senior tax relief program motion by Vice President Mail that we reset the hours required for senior tax relief program to reflect the national minimum wage. Program will continue to provide a maximum of $750 tax credit per household or take any other action relative thereto. Counsel Mail, it suggests if it's okay with you that we would call it the state, the national or state minimum wage, whichever is greater. Is that acceptable to you? Or would you rather just leave it the way it is?
It doesn't make a difference, whatever seems to be the interest of the council is going.
Okay, the motion is, I would make the original motion read then, the motion is made to reset the hours required for the senior tax relief program to reflect the national or state minimum wage, whichever is greater.
I'll second the amendment.
Pardon me?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, amendment, the, we need a motion for a...
You can speed it.
I didn't make it, no.
I'll make a motion for the amendment.
Could you, you make the motion for the amendment? Counsel Sanford seconds the motion. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. The main motion then reads, a motion is made to reset the hours required for the senior tax relief program to reflect the national or state minimum wage, whichever is greater. Program will continue to provide a maximum of $750 tax credit per household or take any other action relative thereto. All those in favor of the motion, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Counsel Sanford?
I move that the town council proclaim April 25, 2015, Town of Winthrop Beautification Day. Again, it takes off what the TVs are encouraging, what the chamber has done in the past with a Town of Winthrop Beautification Day, and it makes it an official day that we can have annually and raise the awareness and try to get everybody doing their part in cleaning up not only residential areas, but our business districts also.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
Is it an annual thing?
No, just...
Is it just this?
I thought you said annual.
I'd like to see it become annual.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Then it should be like the third Thursday of every April or something, you know, or whatever.
The third Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know what you wanted.
Yeah, no, I'd like, it says annual, but I'd like to see it becoming.
It doesn't say...
It just says, it just says, April 25.
Just this year.
Right.
You want to amend it? They say the fourth Saturday in April.
The third Saturday? Third Saturday in April.
No, that's by a track, beautification day.
What's that?
Nothing, just... Sorry.
You want to amend it to say...
That could be school vacation week, somewhere in there, because I think the third...
So let's just do it, let's do it.
Let's just do this for this year.
Okay, all those in favor of the main motion to town council proclaim April 25, 2015, seconded by Counsel Luttrell. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Rich, would you comment on the board of health smoking regulations that the...
So I guess one of the questions was, were we going to refer that to rules and ordinance anyways that the board, I thought that was one of the things you had talked about at the, to have them review the regulations?
Well, I think, I think at this point, all we have to do is announce that they have made the regulations and that at some point they need to go to rules and ordinance to make, we have to determine...
Yeah, so there's been modifications to the smoking laws and, and, you know, they were voted on by the Board of Health last week, I think it was, or like, and, you know, there were modifications made, so we were thinking that that would probably be best referred to rules and ordinances, or is that something we need to discuss as far as...
How do you feel about it?
I attended both Board of Health meetings, and they finally passed, two weeks ago, a new rule, which they claim they can do and don't have to come to the council for us.
Right.
So I don't think they want us to look at it, because if we look at it and we change it, what we say is binding rather than what they say, so...
No, I think my, my only question was, if they have the authority to make the rules, and the rules conflict with something that's...
They have authority to make rules, but not if they conflict with something that's in the ordinance.
Okay, so what's your suggestion at this point?
So, you know, my suggestion, but I don't want to step on Board of Health's toes, is that it should go to rules and it should be looked at by the rules and ordinance, and it should be made into an ordinance and get rid of the ordinances that we have now affecting smoking and tobacco.
I agree, that's how I initiated it, because we have some stuff in the rules that doesn't fit anymore, like that you could go to the smoking area of the restaurant.
Correct, but the feeling of the Board of Health at the time was they need to knock one, they were going to make rules.
So they, they made the rules, but I think my intent was, if they have the authority to make the rules, then they should come back and our charter, our rules and ordinance should, our ordinance should be in concert with that. As far as referring it for, to come back with a report, I don't think we needed to do that, but I think it, how do you feel about that? Do you want it to refer to you or just...
Counsel President, can I?
Hold on one second.
I'm fine with going to rules. If there is a motion to send it, you know, by the Board of Health, I don't think we should overrule their intent.
All right, so we're going to leave it just that they have changed their rules, their rules are going to be published on the, on the town website.
Could we ask town council for clarification on what, you know, what, what the Board of Health is able to do versus, because I know that they've checked with the Department of Public Health and what their, what the statutes, that they are allowed to implement rules and things like that. Could we ask for the town council?
Yes, they have, and we have gotten clarification on the issue. And it's essentially where this Board of Health believes there are local circumstances that require regulations more strenuous, strenuous if you will, than, if that's not the proper word, more restricted if you will, than state statute on a subject. They have jurisdiction to implement. They also have jurisdiction to implement reasonable rules and regulations as they are relative to local conditions that are not otherwise spoken to in state law. In the issue of smoking, obviously there are state laws, so they need to abide by those parameters first, but they need to make findings that where there are local conditions that they require, you know, more additional regulation, but they can promulgate under their own authority, under the, under the enabling, you know, statutes of boards of health.
So I guess the question is, they have had, you've had the ruling that what they've done is proper, and I believe it's proper. My only recommendation was that if it's, if what they're doing is in conflict with our rules and ordinances, then we should reflect our rules and ordinance so they're not in conflict.
Yeah, naturally.
So that's, that's all I was saying with that, not that we come back and overrule them or anything like that. Counsel Bayasian?
So I guess that would be the point of clarification on that. So are we, their ruling would supersede and we would modify our ordinances to reflect what they ruled?
No, no, no.
And so that's my, I guess that's what I want to clarify.
The Board of Health has original jurisdiction over certain issues that really our ordinances don't have jurisdiction over, relative to issues of health that are, that are original to and completely within the domain of the Board of Health. And those are the things they can issue regulations on, independent of the council, okay? Because their regulations, they're processed through a different procedure under their rules, and so, you know, they don't need to be in ordinance, for example.
My only point was, if they have made a rule that's in conflict with our ordinances, their rule rules.
Yes.
However, doesn't it make sense, if their rule rules, that we have either take it out of our ordinances if it conflicts?
Sure.
Or change our ordinance to reflect it?
Sure.
Right now, our ordinances talk about, I believe, I'm pretty sure they talk about smoking... However, doesn't it make sense, if their rule rules, that we have either take it out of our ordinances if it conflicts?
Sure.
Or change our ordinance to reflect it?
Sure.
Right now, our ordinances talk about, I believe, I'm pretty sure, they talk about smoking areas in restaurants.
In restaurants, in nursing homes.
There are no smoking areas in restaurants. So, I think that should, that's an example of that should be pulled out, not, not changing our rules per se, but amending them to conform with. Makes sense? So, is that okay with you, Phil?
Yeah.
So, we should make a motion to that.
No, we don't need to make a motion for that. I don't believe we need to make a motion. All of, do you think we need a motion, Phil? Mr. President?
I think a motion should come from the Board of Health, asking the council to adopt their regulations.
Right.
And then it would go to us, and we would do it. That's how I feel it should be done.
I understand. I would, I would, I would agree with you in the fact that you're, it may be belts and suspenders, but it's really unnecessary and could continue the conflict you're debating. These issues are original to the Board of Health. They only need to be regulations adopted by the Board of Health and stand on their own.
Right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I ask that the Board of Health, what the recommendation would be to the Board of Health is to refer to the council for proper clarification?
We'll do.
So, at that point, we can get what needs to be in ordinances and take all the ordinances out that don't need to be.
I will do that.
Not to change or to ratify or whatever.
Nick, send me a little email on that. That's what I did. Okay. Moving on with the letter that I have, the issue about the letter from the lottery request we talked about, we don't need any action on it.
So, can I make, and this is new business?
Yes.
Is this appropriate to, so, again, we just had Easter, I'd like to resurrect Craig's motion, though, on, excuse me, the vice president's motion.
Resurrect.
Yes, to use that.
No pun intended.
No, no pun intended, but, no, I really did think that councillor, Vice President Mail's motion in regards to requesting the town manager to develop a plan to digitize the documents prospectively was, is an important thing that we should vote on, charging him to come up with a plan.
I understand that, but I've ruled it in, it's an administrative situation, it's not a council situation. The town manager has, can look into that and get back to us. The motion was...
Could you please look into that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, couple of things under public relations. Anybody have anything under public relations? Public comment, sorry, Mary Lou.
Oh, thank you. It was very fitting that at the beginning of this meeting, the town manager introduced our new library director, who's going to start next week. Next week is National Library Week, and I'm here to invite all of you who haven't been to the library for a while to come back. Find your card, get a new card, but also I wanted to relay to you some programming that's taking place. We've had a long, hot winter, we've had patrons in and out of the library, people are reading up a storm, but we also have programming going on. And tomorrow night, the waterfront crew poets are coming in to release their new book of collected poems, and that's at 6:00 PM in the hazel room. Starting on Friday, Friday morning, there's an eight-week class on drawing starting. It's from 10:30 in the morning till noon. We have a new resident who's a frequent patron at the library, his name is Gerard Leary, and he teaches drawing, just a hobby of his. He teaches the same class at the lifelong learning institute at UMass Boston for a fee, but he's offering it for free to the town of Winter, and it's starting on Friday at 10:30. And if you're interested, please call the library at 846-1703 and sign up, or just show up on Friday morning. I'll introduce you to Mr. Leary. And during National Library Week, we also have a programming on healthy eating that takes place once a month, and that's on Tuesday the 14th at 6:00 PM, also in the hazel room. And at your next meeting, I hope you let me speak about the scholarship committee, because I'll have more information about that.
You'd rather wait till next meeting for that?
Yes.
If you want to go on the first public comment, you don't have to wait for the second.
No, well, I was staying for school stuff Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President, just a little comment. The school, the two days last week, we did extended hours, there are Tuesdays and Thursdays. The cement cured very quickly, quicker than we thought. They were done around midnight, you didn't have to go until 4:00 in the morning, so those are two out of the 10 days that are done. There was no complaints and no issues with that. And just as a citizen, I guess, Councillor Mail's earlier motion that was set aside on the ferry and the voters getting free tickets, I think if we're going down and looking at that as a potential later on down the line, I think we have to do it very carefully of having a select group of people get preferential treatment, because I know his understanding in theory is they barely got the $29,000. I think as we stand here today, we all know enterprise accounts traditionally have always gone in the red. To start this in August and say the first year, we're going to be in the black is not realistic. So, the enterprise accounts then taps into the general fund, which is then my tax dollars. So, why shouldn't I be entitled to four free tickets? So, as we go down that and look at these things, like, A, we have to be careful that we're not giving preferential treatment to a segment of the population that we have been investigated before on, and that everyone gets treated fairly the same, that we all should get four tickets, if anyone gets four tickets. Thank you for taking that into consideration.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Jim?
Forgive me, but not under public comment, but I would ask the council actually take a vote, so the record is clear, on the 2.8 million dollar financing to be referred to Finance Committee. I need that as a matter of record for our bond councils who have eagle eyes on these matters and want to make sure that they can trace every aspect.
Even though the Finance Committee has it, you want an official vote of the council to refer?
To refer, yeah.
Okay, could I have a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Councillor LeTieri to refer, to refer the 2.8 million dollar bond issue to Finance.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Delvento.
And to advertise.
Yeah, it's going to be advertised. No discussion on the vote?
Does it need to be roll called?
No. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public relations. This is Autism Awareness Month. Autism is very close to my heart, where my grandfather was autistic, and if you walk through the Coming School, you'll see the blue and white balloons. If you drive by houses in town, you'll see lots of blue lights. If anybody needs a blue light, give me a call, I have extras. Autism awareness is a very special thing. Also, we talked about the Fabiano thing, playground fundraiser earlier. Rich, did you want to comment on Wellness Awareness?
Sure, I will, so, the Department of Health, Public Health, and really Meredith Hurley has really been the backbone behind all of this, but Wellness Week starts April 12th, which is Sunday, and that is where there's going to be a Health and Wellness Expo at the high school gym from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's also going to be the Coming School, PTO sponsoring a 5K fun, fun run fundraiser as well. And again, you can go on the website, as well as you can contact the Health Department with Meredith Hurley, and she can give you more information, but there's flyers around town. On Monday, April 13th, Dana Farber is going to be here with the mobile mammography van at the Winter Senior Center, and they have the capacity to screen 30 women in the community for mammograms. And so, certainly contact Meredith Hurley, I know that they have a number of women lined up, but there's still room available for more women in regards to things, and what they do is they'll go through your insurance and things like that and make sure that everything's all set up, and that the proper people will be notified with the results and everything. That's on Monday, April 13th. Wednesday, April 15th, is going to be a really, it's actually really great, the community forum at Winter High School, the topic is actually substance abuse in all ages, mental health awareness and resources. We have a guest speaker that I actually don't have right in front of me, but it's going to be very well attended, and I want to say that, and I don't have that here, but I, no, I do have here, sorry. Monday, at the high school, which is actually one of the most exciting things as well, there's an alcohol and substance abuse awareness that Chris Herring, former Celtic and local boy who is, has been, has had his own bouts with substance abuse, and he's going to be sponsored, he was sponsored by Viking Pride and Winter Charities, he's going to be talking at the high school in the auditorium in regards to his experience and the dangers of everything and the opiate abuse that's going on. Wednesday, and then Wednesday, to follow that up, is going to be the larger community forum with, with the mental health as well as substance abuse that's going on in town, and I think public safety is part of that as well, I believe.
Correct.
Okay. And is there anything else on that one particularly that you could elaborate that I'm kind of butchering?
Just, yeah, Meredith Hurley and I met today with the Street Navigators, and they're now on board. The Street Navigator is going to play a very important role. Our vision for these Street Navigators from the town manager's office down through Meredith's office, my office, is to connect them with drug court. There's no aftercare once you get that certificate from drug court, so we feel it's an important role that they have followed up. Recovery coaches, after they graduate that drug court, to ensure that they're doing the right thing, that they need to talk to somebody, someone is always there for them. In the meantime, we'll be working with the fire department, the police department to give these recovery coaches some leads, other people that we deal with on a daily basis or weekly basis. So, all of that is going to be rolled out during this week as well.
Terrific.
And we look forward to that. So, if anyone needs any help, they can contact my office, Meredith's office, with the recovery coaches, we'd be happy to jump to that, though.
So, just to wrap up, at the high school, I told you about Monday with Chris Herring speaking, there's, and I believe that Mike Ruzioni is actually going to introduce him and open things up. Tuesday, there's going to be bullying awareness, Wednesday is another mental health, going through that for the teenagers. Thursday is pride, LBGTQ, there's going to be an assembly in regards to that, and then Friday is a focus on physical health and community. So, it's a busy week.
And just one other quickie, but the senior, the senior citizen tax work off the deadline for that application is the 17th.
Yeah, and just I had forgotten, the Chamber of Commerce is holding a $10,000 dinner event on April 25th from seven to nine at the Cottage Park Yacht Club, $35. Tickets are available through the Chamber, 617-846-9898.
Okay.
The tip-off for the high school?
Yes, that is what date? April 28th is the tip-off date, that's for the...
The last piece of steel going in.
Top off.
Oh, yes, yes, the last piece of school going, the last piece of steel.
Top off.
Going into the high school, there's going to be a celebration on the 28th at 1:00 at the high school.
I just wanted to clarify with the town manager, is it posted on the website, the Wellness Week, is there a way to access, like, what's going to go on?
It's on his management letter.
It is, but we can double check and make sure everything is there.
I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, the council anticipates going into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of real estate. Discussion of this matter in open session could have a detrimental effect, the matters to be discussed would be to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. We will return from executive session for a review only. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Councillor Delvento, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Boyajin, we have a roll call vote.
Councillor Call, yes. Councillor Hampton.
Yes.
Councillor Walcori.
Steve.
Councillor Verrill.
Yes.
Councillor Terry.
Yes.